Councilmember Berman, Councilmember Burt, Councilmember DuBois, Councilmember Phil Seth, Mayor Holman, Councilmember Niss, Councilmember Scharf, Vice Mayor Schmidt, Councilmember Wolbach, seven present.
Thank you, and our first item this evening on the agenda is a study session on the status of Palo Alto Bicycle and Pedestrian Program.
Turn it over to Josh Mello and Sarah.
Great, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we'd like to update you on our progress on the City Bicycle and Pedestrian Program. This evening, I'm joined by Sarah Sayed, who's a Senior Transportation Planner in our division. She started back in April, and she joined us from the VTA Engineering and Construction Division, where she was a project manager for transit capital projects. Prior to that, she worked for BART, as well as the City of Oakland, and was a researcher at UC Berkeley. So, we're honored to have Sarah here. She's been managing the bulk of the bicycle and pedestrian projects, so she'll be a valuable asset tonight as we move into the study session.
Do we control our slides? How do I move the slides?
You guys help with the slide moving stuff?
Okay, great. Okay, do you know where to put?
Yeah. So, as most of you know, back in 2012, the City of Palo Alto adopted the 2012 Bicycle and Pedestrian Transportation Plan. It was completed by a consultant under contract for the city. This identified kind of the ultimate build-out of the city's bicycle and pedestrian network. Citywide, it identified different types of bikeway facilities, as well as pedestrian improvements at assorted intersections, and some important gap closures, particularly along the Caltrain-Alma corridor. There's several gap closure projects identified that are shown in red on there, and then there's also some key east-west trail connectivity projects. Last year, there was funding programmed in our capital improvement budget to advance a couple dozen projects pulled directly from the city's bicycle and pedestrian plan. The map that's shown here illustrates the different corridors that we were able to advance starting last year. Shown in purple are the Bike Boulevard corridors. These include key connections like the Bryant Street north-south corridor, Park and Wilkie, as well as Ross, Greer, and Amarillo-Moreno and Midtown, and then a couple corridors in South Palo Alto. Through a partnership with Google, we were able to supplement this project list and actually add about four additional corridors, and the concept planning for those was funded directly by Google, but we advanced those projects concurrently with the city-funded projects. Shown in green is the Midtown Connector project. We're going to appear a little bit later this year to update you on that project. Since it was originally envisioned, it's become more of a comprehensive study of east-west connectivity through the Midtown neighborhood, and those corridors that are under study as part of that project are shown in green on the map. So, after kicking off the planning, the concept planning for this package of projects, we started with a series of bicycle ride-alongs, where we met members of the community out at, you know, different shopping centers and schools, and rode bikes and walked, and basically toured the corridors with all the members of the community, receiving input along the way. We videotaped those bike-alongs. A lot of parents elected to bring their children, so we were able to see how different rider types handled the existing facilities that are out there, as well as document some of the challenges folks faced when they crossed the major streets, or attempted to navigate some of the corridors. We followed that up with some direct marketing at the farmer's market on California Avenue. We set up a table, and we had a big map of all the Bike Boulevard corridors, and the goal of that was to solicit input from people who don't necessarily ride bicycles today and may want to and be interested in the program. We got a lot of good feedback from that. We also had an interactive map of all of the corridors, where folks could drop dots on the map, and then note challenges, obstacles, opportunities that they saw along the network. So, since that early stages of planning, we've held several rounds of community meetings, and we've been kind of in an iterative process of development of the different concept plans. Some of the concept planning efforts have moved a lot more smoothly than others. There's a couple of projects that present some assorted challenges, and we're recommending rethinking some of those projects as we move forward. More recently, we have brought forward the Churchill Avenue Phase One Concept Plan, which you approved earlier this year. We also brought forward the Park Boulevard, Wilkie, and Stanford Concept Plan, which was also approved, as well as Maybelle Avenue. Immediately upon adoption of the Concept Plan for Maybelle Avenue, we were able to implement some small improvements through some city maintenance projects, as well as some cooperation with the school district. And more recently, you approved the Concept Plan for the Charleston Road or Rastodaro multimodal complete street project. The concept plans that we're currently working on are kind of a base map aerial photography overlaid with CAD drawings, so engineering drawings. We think this is a good way to illustrate the improvements to the public. This is an example of the Bryant Street Extension Concept Plan Line, which will actually be bringing forward in November for your approval. This is extending the existing Bike Boulevard south across Meadow Drive. So, we think this is a pretty good tool. This is just the first phase in the design process. After the Concept Plan, we move into final design, which would actually produce construction drawings.
At this point, I'm going to briefly touch upon our early implementation and current projects. As Josh mentioned, after we have approved concept plans, we really look for ways where we can implement projects cost-effectively prior to awarding the design and going through a more formal construction process. So, we work closely with our colleagues in the Department of Public Works and in the school district to advance elements of our approved concept plans. This summer, we were able to advance part of the Maybelle Avenue Bicycle Boulevard. I'll share a couple of photos of that on the next slide. And we also were able to advance the Matadero Avenue Bicycle Boulevard with the recent repaving project to remove the center line and add sharrows. So, just going, okay. Here's a snapshot of bulbouts on El Camino Way that the city constructed as part of the Maybelle Project, as well as a pathway connection from Terman Middle School to the Los Altos-Palo Alto Bicycle Path. Our Public Works Department constructed that path this summer. You probably have also seen around town many high-visibility, green pavement markings, and a bicycle signal that was installed at Alma and Litton. This is just an example of partnering with development projects to implement improvements This summer, the school district stepped up in a big way to construct spot improvements near both Gunn High School and Palo Alto High School. The Georgia Avenue pathway connecting to Gunn was previously a narrow-constrained path shared by hundreds of cyclists and pedestrians. We worked with the school district on a design to double the width and to add lighting, as well as a treatment at the opening of the path to ensure that motor vehicles don't drive on the path, with some new landscaping. Changes were also made to the Los Robles Ave entrance to the path to Gunn High School to allow families, people with trailers, people with special needs to access that. Previously, there were stairs that reduced the ability of the public to use the path. Here at Paly, construction impacts on campus closed off an existing path, and following complaints from the community, we worked with the school district right after school started to collaborate to construct a new pathway there, right through the driveway. So, as Josh mentioned, we are currently bringing forward some recommendations to rethink some of our current projects, so I wanted to briefly discuss that before we hear your thoughts. And on the Bryant Street Bicycle Boulevard update, Bryant Street is the nation's first Bicycle Boulevard. Palo Alto is still looked to as a leader for the changes that were made on Bryant to reduce the levels of motor vehicle traffic, to create a safe space. And so, the kind of changes we're looking at aren't too significant. Nevertheless, we haven't had broad support from the community for these changes. There've been a lot of questions about on-street parking changes proposed near intersections. Some of these changes are proposed due to visibility concerns, but we want to go back and take a closer look and do the parking occupancy studies before we advance this project. We heard a lot of feedback from parents that they let their kids ride on Bryant Street, but that they're uncomfortable on Bryant Street downtown due to the parking maneuvers with the diagonal parking, and also just the increased traffic volumes. So, we would also like to revisit the downtown segment of the Bryant Street Bicycle Boulevard update, do more engagement with the business community. We didn't get a lot of turnout from those stakeholders. And the other change, which was very well received by the community, at the last meeting, we did remove the high-visibility green markings throughout the residential portions of the Bike Boulevard, based on community input. We really do want to continue to utilize those treatments, but not in a broad-brush manner, just using them at high-conflict points, so we can really preserve their effectiveness. So, the next project we are also recommending rethinking is the Homer Avenue and Channing Avenue Enhanced Bikeway. Similar to the Bryant Street Bike Boulevard, we had a lack of downtown business involvement, and we're proposing some pretty significant changes. So, before we move forward with this type of plan, we'd like to look at some less drastic concepts that still meet the project goals. We would like to focus more on the issue of connectivity between the Homer Tunnel to downtown, really facilitating the north-south movements that are needed in the downtown area for cyclists. And finally, thank you very much for approving the Park Boulevard and Wilkie Way Concept Plans at the end of August. We have been moving forward, and one of the items that we identified when we came in August was a need for additional community meeting due to lower turnout from the Stanford Avenue area. We held that meeting earlier this month, and following the meeting and in conversations with many in the community, we received input to look at a more protected, high-quality bikeway on the area of Park Boulevard between Cal Ave and south, towards Lambert Avenue. So, the segment of Park Boulevard that is in the commercial district and near Page Mill Expressway, which currently has bicycle lanes. So, we are going to be moving forward to the design phase for Park, and we do want to mention that, you know, with approved development projects on Park, implementing a high-quality, protected bikeway may be more challenging, so we will be looking very carefully at opportunities to provide a higher level of comfort on Park in the design phase. Finally, many of our current projects involve a high level of inter-agency coordination, and we wanted to touch upon our recent work primarily with Caltrain on the Churchill Avenue Corridor Improvement Project. We have a great opportunity to partner to receive some federal funding through the Section 130 program, and have been just really delighted with Caltrain and the California Public Utility Commission's engagement and support for moving forward with improvements to the at-grade crossing of Churchill and Alma. No funding is guaranteed at this time, but we had a community meeting last Thursday night and received a lot of great feedback and support of safety improvements to that intersection. We're looking at not only pedestrian and bicycle improvements, but also improvements to reduce the chance of a vehicle being stopped on the tracks at that crossing. We're also working closely with the City of Mountain View. They are updating their bicycle plan, and there are many border areas, particularly in South Palo Alto, where there's gaps in the network that we're working with Mountain View to close. And finally, we're partnering with VTA on a number of efforts. One, more recently, is to bring more adult bicycle education to Palo Alto. So, that's all I have for now. I'll turn it back over to Josh.
Thank you, Sarah. So, you know, more immediately, some items that we anticipate bringing before you before the end of 2015 include Contract Award for Final Design Phase for Park Boulevard, Wilkie, Stanford Avenue, as well as Maybelle Avenue, and then Churchill Avenue Phase Two. Churchill Avenue Phase Two is the segment of Churchill, kind of east of the Caltrain tracks, all the way to Bryant Street. That was not included in the Phase One Concept Plan that was adopted earlier this year, but we think that's a priority, especially given the work that we've been doing with Caltrain and California Public Utilities Commission. So, we're actually going to be bringing those items forward to you in November. Early 2016, we would like to advance the concept plans for approval for Moreno-Amarillo, Ross Road, and the Bryant Street update. And we've also started to envision a more comprehensive look at downtown, and this would be a downtown bicycle and pedestrian circulation and safety study. We would like to look at both Alma Street, Homer Tunnel connection, Homer-Channing, and then the Bryant Street Bike Boulevard segment within downtown more comprehensively. We'd like to do some more intensive business outreach, perhaps do some type of tactical urbanism demonstration to let the business community see what a protected bikeway would look like downtown. We also would like to modify some of the traffic signal timing downtown to make it more pedestrian-friendly and develop some timing plans for that. So, we anticipate bringing some type of scope of work forward to you in 2016 for that downtown pedestrian and bicycle circulation study. We'll also be coming back to you in November to give you an update on the Midtown Connector Project. That's a fairly complex project. It's evolved pretty significantly over the last several months, so we'd like to spend some time discussing that with you in early November. We've been working cooperatively with Caltrans to develop new Class Four bikeway design standards. On your consent agenda this evening is the approval of the NACTO Urban Bikeway Design Guide, as well as the Urban Street Design Guide. That will give us the flexibility to start to incorporate some of these separated bikeways, cycle track, protected bikeway designs into our Bike Boulevard and Enhanced Bikeway projects. Along with that, we are excited to announce that Palo Alto is now the newest affiliate member of NACTO, which opens up a lot of the resources that are available to consult with other cities that are on the cutting edge of bikeway design and share some kind of, you know, share knowledge with those staff members at the other cities. And last but not least, we'd like to start to harness the data that we'll be collecting through the, you know, the pedestrian and bicycle counter program that was approved around the elementary and middle schools, as well as our new traffic signal system, which we'll also be updating you on shortly. The traffic signal system has the capability to conduct much more robust bicycle counts at our signalized intersections, and that coupled with the pedestrian and bicycle counters that we're installing around the schools, I think we can start to build a really good database of bicycle and pedestrian activity throughout the city, which will help us be more competitive when it comes to grant applications and, you know, other requests for funding. I'm also excited to announce this evening that we've transitioned at the Transportation Division over to the Palo Alto 311 system. We've started using that exclusively for all work requests, so any requests related to bikeways, traffic signals, signage, pavement markings, parking regulations can now all be submitted through Palo Alto 311, and that will enable us to more effectively track where citizen demand is and citizen concern is. All of the requests are mapped and tracked all the way from entry to closeout. And with that, we'll end our presentation.
Great, thank you. And, Councilmember, since there is not a staff report, and we've become aware of the breadth of discussion items in the presentation, you'll notice on Slide 12 that it references Homer Avenue and Channing Avenue. And as I live on Homer, if there's any discussion about Homer beyond, you know, where the pedestrian-bicycle tunnel is, the underpass is, I'd ask councilmembers if you'd hold those to the end, and then, if need be, I can step out of the room. It seems like not likely, but just in an abundance of caution. So, with that, councilmembers, questions? Councilmember Burt.
So, I have a few comments and questions, and I'll let you kind of jot down the questions and maybe answer them toward the end. So, one has to do with places where we have off-road bike paths. I know you mentioned that the bowl path, or some of the ones around schools, you'd looked at widening, and I want to find out whether we're looking at segregating pedestrians from bikes potentially, where we have combination paths of bikes and pedestrians, and long-term having a pedestrian path and a bike path next to each other where space allows. I also am interested in, within the Ross and Greer Bike Boulevards, whether there will be consideration of some turn restrictions, whether there are closures like we have on Bryant, or simply partial restrictions that would reduce the use of those boulevards for kind of longer-distance car travel, still making them accessible for local driving. Interested in, with the Matadero or the Midtown Bike Path, where we, do we have a clear intention to have a pedestrian crossing under the tracks at, to connect that with the Matadero path that is on the, we'll call it southwest side of the tracks? And if so, would it cross under both Alma and the tracks, given that we don't have a signal there currently, or would we add a signal? And you mentioned, Mayor, your potential conflict is with Homer on the other side of Middlefield. I don't think there's an issue with, out toward Alma, so I'll just lay this out as a question of whether there's a reexamination of, once we hit High Street, you know, we come, we have the counter-directional lane, and there had been discussion a few years ago about potentially either putting a counter-directional on High, or turning High from Forest to Homer into a two-way street. And you may not know that historically, that section down there of one-way High Street was driven by Peninsula Creamery trucks needing to turn in, and that's been a while since we've had that need, but we kind of have this artifact of a two-lane, one-way street. And then, on Bryant, one of the things that I've been concerned about for a long while is cars that cross Bryant aren't really notified clearly that they're crossing this heavy traffic bike lane, and whether there'd be warning signs at the stop signs and/or stencils on the street. And I know I've been told that stencils on the Bike Boulevard aren't a typical practice, but at an intuitive level, when I'm a driver, they are a real strong reminder that I'm crossing a Bike Boulevard. And even though I'm also a rider, I know that I need that kind of reminder to double-check that I'm not just looking for cars and an occasional bike, I'm looking for a lot of bikes, and I think they're real valuable. I'm glad that you're looking at the downtown crossways on Bryant. It's really been a gap for a long while. It's not just for kids, but those of us who want to cross downtown, it can add, you know, a lot of time on a bike trip. And if we're really trying to make bicycling a preferred choice, having at least one route where we can move quickly across town is real valuable. The slide, or the picture with the Park Boulevard showed a counter-directional lane. I don't know if that's what you're actually considering. Be curious on that. I've also had members of the community recently bring to my attention that the downtown area and Stanford, but that's not our jurisdiction, has become an increasing problem on bike theft. And we can have a great bicycle system, but people will be discouraged from riding if they have to keep buying bikes. And you mentioned the Mountain View connections. I know that San Antonio Center is a real bear to get to by bicycle. And then, I'm real glad that you're working with Caltrans on some of the rule-making. One, in addition to the counter-directional lanes, is where we have T intersections, and you're on the bike lane at, I'll call it the top of the T, where you're riding through, whether it's a traffic signal or a stop sign, bikes are legally required to stop, even though cars can't go in legally into the bike lane. And I'd be interested in whether, if a curb was placed, whether Caltrans would accept allowing bikes to legally proceed through that, in the bike lane, through a T intersection without having to stop. So, thanks, and I appreciate all the progress we're getting.
Would staff like to hear questions and comments from everybody, and then respond all at once? Would you like to do these as they come?
I think, given the number, it might make more sense to do them as they come.
Okay.
So that we can formulate our answers appropriately.
Very good.
So, I'll respond to the questions first, and then if you need me to respond to the comments, I can do that as well. So, your first question was, are we looking at segregating pedestrians and bicyclists on high-use, shared-use paths that are off-road? There are no current plans to construct parallel cycle tracks to any of the shared-use paths in town. That's not saying that we would preclude that as an option if there was room available. I think that may be difficult to enforce in the long run. I think you'd end up with pedestrians on the bicycle way and bikes on the pedestrian way. We'd have to probably ramp up enforcement if we were going to move that direction. I do think we may want to look into a courtesy campaign on both the shared-use paths and the tunnels to help folks share the space, and that's something we can work with the community on if there was an interest in that. Second question was on Ross and Greer. Are we looking at turn restrictions, half-closures, full closures? We have not identified any locations for turn restrictions, or half-closures, or full closures. There's some language in the comp plan that makes that difficult when you're interrupting the connectivity. However, I think the comp plan also references our Bike Boulevard network and mentions that partial closures may be an appropriate solution in some cases. If there's any specific locations along those corridors, we can definitely look at that as we move forward in the concept planning process. But to date, we have not identified any partial or full closures along those corridors. The third question was regarding Midtown Connector. Are we looking at a crossing of Caltrain? We're actually going to be coming back to you in November to give you a full update on the Midtown Connector Project, and I'd be glad to answer that tonight, but we'll have more substantial discussion about that in November. That is part of the original proposal for the corridor, with some type of a cross-barrier connection at that point. Next question was regarding Homer, the Homer Tunnel connection. Are we looking at High Street, either converting High Street to two-way, or adding a contra-flow bike lane? I think we'd like to look at those options as part of the downtown circulation and mobility study. I'd also like to look at a bikeway on Alma Street. There's potentially some extra capacity on Alma, and there's some modifications that could be made to on-street parking that may allow for a bikeway, a northbound- parking that may allow for a bikeway, a northbound bikeway to be installed on Alma that would allow people to make that movement. So I think there's probably about four different alternatives that we'd want to look at, and High Street would be, you know, a big, strong candidate for that connection. So for Park Boulevard, you asked if we were considering a two-way, separated bikeway. The answer is yes. I think we would look at a two-way, separated bikeway as well as one-way, separated bikeways. It's fairly constrained right-of-way there, so I don't know if we can fit a two-way, separated bikeway. But that's appealing to us because of the high number of turning movements onto the ramp for Page Mill Road that conflict with the southbound bike lane. So if we could move cyclists over to the east side of the roadway, they would be out of that conflict zone for the expressway ramp. And then I think the remainder were comments. We can certainly talk to Caltrans about bicycle regulations at T intersections. I know there are some jurisdictions that have already, you know, made that change to their ordinances to allow that movement.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Yeah, I wonder if you could put slide two on. I just want to talk about the Matadoro Midtown Connector. And I know we're going to have this back in November 9th, so you don't need to respond, but just to give a few thoughts. If you could go to three, I guess is a better picture.
Is it? This one?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm particularly concerned with the east-west connections around town. We spent a lot of time talking about El Camino and the rail corridors and how they disrupt east-west traffic. And so east-west connectors in town are really absolutely necessary to make this a community. The Matadoro Creek is especially interesting because it connects the Baylands to Voll Park, and it has potential barrier breakers on both 101 and Alma tracks. And it's off-road, which I think is the only bike path in town that would be off-road potentially. Also, there are dollars that could come from the Santa Clara Valley Water District on that. I think it's an important element, and there are examples in our neighboring communities, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, Los Altos, Cupertino, who have all used the Santa Clara Valley roadways, pathways for bike and pedestrian paths. So there's a lot of examples out there. I would think in our discussion, it would be good to have maybe some pictures of what a creekside pathway looks like. Two, some sense of the property values around the pathways. Do they go up or down near the trails? Three, some sense of police activity along the pathways. Is it increased or decreased or the same as streets and pedestrian activity elsewhere? I think those would be important elements in the discussion, and I look forward to November 9th.
Councilmember Phil Siff.
Thank you. I want to ask about bike share. So in the staff report, it looks like in about six months, we're going to have to make a decision whether to invest in it, right, or cut it back. Can you give us sort of like the 30 seconds quick status update on where we are on that? And also, are there differences in our experience between the University Avenue Station and the Cal Avenue Station?
So the pilot project done through the Air Quality Management District is currently scheduled to end in June of 2016. At that point in time, the MTC is going to take over the contract with Motivate, which is the private operator of the Bay Area Bike Share System. Motivate has submitted a proposal to us to continue as-is bike-share service in the city of Palo Alto. Due to the, you know, the poor sighting of the stations within the city and kind of a lack of density of stations and service, you know, the general feeling is that the current configuration is probably not where we want to be permanently. So we're currently in discussions with SAM Trans and MTC to use some supplemental funding from Bay Area Bike Share to do some additional study to help us determine what bike share in Palo Alto should look like, what our options are, and we'll probably be bringing that to you in the spring, once the study's wrapped up. Under the current, you know, the only proposal that's on the table is to continue the service as-is, starting in July, with Motivate as the operator and the exact same number of bikes and stations. And that's, you know, that's the only decision that's been kind of offered. We're hoping that the SAM Trans/MTC study will give us additional information and additional choices that could potentially be on the table.
Have, you mean, I know that the usage of it hasn't met everybody's expectations or comparable to San Francisco and so forth. Have we seen differences between the University Avenue Station and the Cal Ave Station? Because it seems to me that the last, this is a last-mile problem kind of thing, right? And the dynamics around the University Station versus the Cal Ave Station and the Research Park and so forth seem like a lot different. So are we seeing differences between those?
Very slight differences. The two busiest stations are near Caltrain, both in downtown and on Cal Ave.
I guess you would expect that. So the answer is we'll know more in the spring?
Yeah, the answer is we're hoping to bring you kind of a menu of options in the spring as to what our next step would be after June.
Okay.
Councilmember Niss?
I think it is probably the same question that Eric just asked, which is on page 18, where you've talked about the Peninsula Pilot Cities. Is that the same issue that you've just discussed, or is that a different one? It's right in the middle of the page. So for it...
Yes, the Peninsula Pilot Cities are jointly working with SAM Trans and MTC to do a Peninsula-specific study of bike share.
Same thing you just mentioned, Eric, as a result of us not participating fully in the pilot sharing program, correct?
Yes, because the pilot, the general feeling is the pilot was not as effective as it could have been.
So looking at some of the other graphs that you've had in here, and I can't find Boulder at the moment, but Boulder's a lot like we are. And it looks as though they are using bikes half again as much as we are. Why would you guess that's the case? Better placement, and I would tell you what page that's on, but I remember it's in, it's in here somewhere, where Boulder and Palo Alto are compared.
Well...
He's also the very long chart on trips per day. That's on page 17, and I'll pack it page 21.
Is there, oh, okay.
I think the, while they're looking at that, Councilmember, population's obviously just a little bit bigger than ours, but I think the, I mean, the campus is big and it's integrated more directly with the city than Stanford is here. So I'm sure you've got a lot of student usage in Boulder, would be my guess, in a way that we just don't have, in the same way it's between Stanford and our town.
So I guess...
So the chart on page 17 shows the trips per bike per day for, you know, the largest systems in the world, and then it also includes Mountain View, San Jose, Palo Alto, and Redwood City. I think, I mean, I think the root of the issue is that the pilot did not really serve Palo Alto well. You know, there's stations located at the Caltrain stations, but then, you know, there's a bike-share station two blocks away, but that's about the extent of the trip that you can make. There's no additional stations on the east side of downtown. Bike trips are generally one to two miles, and we really don't have any stations that are one to two miles from Caltrain. So that your options for making trips are fairly limited under the current configuration. So I think it just hasn't performed up to expectations because of the design of the system.
So it sounds as though it's not gone forever, however. We'll be looking at it more.
Yes.
So just coming back to us, though, certainly the Alma downtown is one that I have heard a number of comments about, which Pat mentioned. But I also have heard from others, and I confess, I don't bike. And I hope somebody on staff has ridden all of these areas that you have talked about, because a number of really intense bike riders have said the sharrows often are not feeling as though they're protecting them on a bike. And so since I have not gone out and ridden, I'm sure that either Eric or Pat has done that, I think it would be helpful to know exactly where those are. But I know several people in the community have said it makes them, even though the sharrows are painted, it still makes them uneasy.
So one of our takeaways from this whole concept planning process has been that we need to be more deliberative about where we use sharrows, restrict them to areas where we have conflicts, and we need to direct cyclists on where to ride, or notify motorists that there'll be merging cyclists or cyclists making maneuvers in the roadway. Using them wholesale on every corridor, I don't think makes sense. It's, you know, there's some aesthetic issues around that, but it also, you know, people would start to ignore them, and they would just kind of blend into the background. So I think we have to be more strategic about where we use sharrows moving forward.
Thanks.
Another thing we're working on is stress mapping of our bicycle network. So sometimes, you know, we think about how many miles of bike lanes do we have or bicycle boulevards, but if the last block is very stressful, you know, sometimes that has a larger impact on bike mode share, just that one block. So next year, we're going to be working with IT to deploy a ride app where local cyclists will be encouraged to track their rides, and at the end of each ride, they'll be asked to rate the trip, and they can mark high hazards and stressful areas. That will improve our ability for data-driven planning.
Is that it, Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember DeBois?
First of all, thanks for the great overview, and it looks like you guys have been doing a lot of work. Looks good. Just wanted to say, I hope that future concept plans will come to us and not on consent, so we can talk about them. I think we get a lot of pushback or feedback from the community and can give you guys some of that feedback. I want to talk about, a little bit about the importance of protecting our major arterials. I think we're lucky in that a lot of Palo Alto's a grid system, and we can really separate a lot of our major bike boulevards from our major car boulevards. And that's why I think Bryant works so well. I think Park Boulevard makes a tremendous amount of sense, and they basically parallel Alma. And I think the more we can do that kind of thing, we don't have that many major arterials across town. And so when we start to look at plans and start to remove lanes of cars from those major arterials, I think that's when we start to get a lot of feedback. And so I think we need to do similar, parallel kinds of routes for Oregon and Barcadero University. I haven't heard anybody complain that there are too many bikes on their local streets. So I think, again, making those the bike routes, we do hear it when cars start cutting through on local streets, so I think that's what we want to avoid. Going through some of your projects real quick, I did see there was an idea that we might reduce lanes on Middlefield. You know, I hope we get a lot of data on that before we get to go there. I have similar concerns about San Antonio. And San Antonio and Middlefield both seem like places where we could look at parallel local streets. I just also wanted to say on the county plans, I did support the county plans, kind of as-is. So I think there was a little disagreement in council on that one. And in general, I think, I think with transportation, there's kind of a large silent majority of drivers, and we have a lot of drivers from out of town. And we just need to be sensitive that a lot of times in this community outreach, I think we hear a lot from the bikers. We just need to keep that in mind. On the bike share, I think part of it was, it doesn't make economic sense for a lot of people, because it was hard to rent a bike for a one-way trip, work for eight or 10 hours, and then rent again. So you're basically looking at renting all day, and it didn't make sense. In particular, maybe at Cal Ave to Stanford Research Park, if you could get, drop your bike off pretty near your building at the Research Park, that might make a lot more sense than downtown, which I think is pretty walkable. So some quick questions, I'll just rattle them off, and then you can go through them. I think data sources is really critical. I'm glad to hear you guys are focused on that. I'd like to ask that we collect car data as well. It wasn't clear if you were going to do that for the downtown circulation study. I'm also really interested in continuous sources of data. I think over a year ago, we talked a little bit to Waze about getting real-time continuous data, you know, and so people who are traveling around with smartphones, regardless of mode of transportation, there might be some good data sources for that stuff. Had a question about how you're going to look at sharrows and green paint in general. You kind of partially answered that question already, but, you know, it sounds like, you know, on quiet neighborhood streets versus, you know, where there's more traffic. Question about the bike bridge. It seemed like the bike paths weren't necessarily ending up where the bike bridge is going to be built, and kind of like to hear a little bit about that. And again, maybe moving that one bike path off of San Antonio and having it dead-in at 101, if you are on a parallel street and you ended up at the bike bridge. It seemed like that would make more sense. Question about the Paly flow. I think right now, students are using the bridge because of the construction over there, and it seems to be working pretty well. So I'm wondering if that's something that we could look at longer term instead of kind of reopening that crosswalk. And then the last question's about the NACCO guidelines, which we're adopting later tonight. It seems like a lot of those are urban environments, so I'm wondering how they get applied in suburban areas of the city. I know, like on the Bryant Street Boulevard and old Palo Alto, I think we decided not to paint as many green sharrows. And so parts of the guidelines say they're mandatory, but in our ordinance, it says we're going to determine the best solution. So I'm just wondering how we weigh those things out. That's it.
Okay, so first question was, are we going to collect car data with the downtown circulation study? The answer is yes. I think there's going to be some key decision points where we have to look at, you know, where we prioritize the use of the roadway, specific streets downtown, and having the, you know, motor vehicle data is going to be a very key point of data that we need to make those decisions.
Also, the idea of like looking for continuous data sources rather than measuring certain points in time.
Yes, so the new bike and ped counters that are being installed around the different schools will be continuous stream of data. The new traffic signal system will count motor vehicle volumes at all of the intersections on a continuing basis, as well as bicyclists and pedestrians that are actuating the signal. So the clearinghouse that I'd like to investigate would attempt to consolidate all of that continuous data and make it usable for, you know, city staff and the general public when we get to key decision points. In regard to sharrows and green pavement markings, we're going to be much more deliberative about that moving forward. I don't think on local streets, the likelihood of those being appropriate's fairly slim. I think we're going to look more at collector streets and arterials and high-conflict zones, you know, at right-turn lanes where bicyclists and motor vehicles are mixing. Those are the kind of areas where you want to have enhanced pavement markings and use green pavement markings. The bike bridge, this is the Adobe Creek 101 Bike Bridge. If you look at the map that's on the slide there, do we have a laser pointer? Do you have any kind of pointer?
I don't think anything connects to it.
So both the San Antonio Enhanced Bikeway and the Luis Montrose Coverly Bike Boulevard projects that were funded through the partnership with Google will offer a fairly good connection across town to the 101 bicycle and pedestrian overcrossing via Fabian.
So again, it's not, I guess it's not shown on this map, but it seems like, again, you know, in terms of removing a lane of traffic on San Antonio versus getting people over on Montrose to Fabian or... on Montrose to Fabian, or was it Meadow? I guess the bridge is kind of, well, it's Meadow and Nomaverte, I guess is where the bridge is in between, but there's going to be some jog over to that bridge.
Yeah. The current concept plan for San Antonio does not involve removing any travel lanes. It's just narrowing the lanes and modifying the on-street parking. In regards to Paly, using, the students using the bridge instead of the crosswalk across Embarcadero, we just kicked off the Embarcadero Phase Two project a couple weeks ago, and we'll be going, meeting with you, coming out to the community to kind of bounce out, you know, propose some different options and different treatments. And relocating and/or removing crosswalks is certainly something that could be considered through that design process. And in regard to NACTO being relevant in suburban areas, by adopting the NACTO Urban Bike Way Design Guide and the Urban Street Design Guide, we are not locking ourselves into using any of those design criteria. It's merely just another tool in our toolbox that we'll be able to pull from when appropriate. So there are some instances where we may want to look to NACTO for guidance, but we may, there are other instances where we may stick with the standard Caltrans Highway Design Manual and/or ASHTO standards, which are, you know, what a lot of folks are using now.
So, just a quick follow-up, so if it says it's required in NACTO, that doesn't mean...
That means if you're using that treatment, they strongly recommend that you include those elements in that treatment.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you, and thank you for all your hard work on this. It's nice to see it's starting to take shape. Couple things. First of all, when you take Churchill across Alma, if you want to go towards, you know, Town and Country, or Downtown, or the Caltrain Station, right, that currently doesn't work. Because, you know, you have, you can't really get on that path without going through the railroad tracks, or then, or going around, then jumping the curb, or going all the way down, and then cutting in on coming back. Is that part of Phase Two, and what exactly were we doing? I couldn't quite follow it.
Sure, yes. Improving the transition from Churchill to the existing Caltrain bike path is part of the Phase Two proposal. We are also working on more near-term improvements to clear up some of the landscaping on the school side, to make that more seamless. But in the long term, what we're proposing with the Phase Two project is to double the width of the bicycle and pedestrian crossing of Caltrain. So the road would stay the same width as it is today, but we would have a doubly wide path with separate spaces for bicycles and pedestrians that would connect to the multi-use trail, and facilitate those movements in any direction on the path.
So it would be seamless, then, to drive through, you arrive on the path and you could go right or left, right, without having to, okay.
Yes.
That's great. The other thing, I had a similar question with the 101 bridge. So, the mid-down connector feasibility, was that going to, that was going to come down and be close to where that bridge is going over, right? Or not?
Matadero Creek is north of Adobe Creek.
Right, so, but I mean, was there a way, were we going to, if that mid-town connector came down, was that going to hook into where you could then come down and go to the bike bridge to get over 101?
Yeah, generally, the concept has been that it's not cost-effective to improve both of the creek crossings, and with our focus on the Adobe Creek overcrossing, that the Matadero Creek connection would be on, an on-street facility. There are many of our north-south bike boulevards, and then the last piece would be adding the Adobe Reach Trail connection, which would reduce the usage of Bay Shore Road to make that last block or two.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I also wanted to just comment briefly on the bike share. I mean, I'm really glad you guys are focused on, but I do think the problem is that it goes to the wrong places, right? I mean, I think that's fairly obvious. So, are we, are you coming back to us with it, or how are you planning on, I mean, people have talked about getting, you know, Stanford University, Stanford Shopping Center, the Research Park, you know, you could even have a couple bikes in midtown, I suppose, I don't know if that would work, but I mean, are you going to do a feasibility study, and are you hiring a consultant, or how is that going to work?
So, we've been working with Sam Trans, who's put together a scope of work for a consultant that they already have under contract. The funding is coming from the MTC Bike Share Program, and it's being routed through Sam Trans. And one of the things I asked to be included in the scope was what's called a demand analysis. And this is where you look at where people live, work, and play, and there's formulas that have been developed to determine how likely those people are to use bike share to make trips. And we'll get a heat map for the, you know, the entire city that shows where people are likely to make bike share trips. And using that demand analysis, we can then calculate how many bikes and how many stations we would need to have an ideal system that serves our residents and our community effectively. And that'll give us the tools we need to negotiate with Motivate and with MTC, and/or an additional vendor, depending on the outcome of the study this spring.
I also wanted to support your concept of where possible to put in, you know, separated bike lanes. I really like that. I mean, I think, I think that's one of the real, to get, I mean, a lot of the people who already bike, you know, they're comfortable with that, but to bring new people into biking and get those numbers up, I think people are much more comfortable when it's separate. And I think when we look at those major arterials, it's no fun to bike along Al Camino, or Alma, or frankly, even Middlefield. I don't even like biking down North California. And, you know, I biked down Middlefield the other day to get to the JCC, that was not a great experience. So, to the extent possible, I actually agree with Tom, that we should as much as possible try and separate the cars from the bikes. And you want to keep our arterials, you know, with the cars and bike lanes without the bikes. So I thought that was a really good comment that Councilmember DeBois made. I also want to comment briefly on Councilmember Burt's comment about pedestrian, you're talking about pedestrian paths in certain places. I think that's a great idea. I like that. If feasible, I actually would also like jogging trails next to it, in which you have not concrete, or asphalt, or pavement, but something you can run on without destroying your knees. I think that's really helpful. You see that on Stanford's, where they have the, you know, the little dirt track, it doesn't have to be wide right on the side, and I don't think it's that expensive to add the little dirt track, and I think that makes a huge difference. So I think you guys did a great job, and I'm looking forward to hearing about the mid-town connector, because I also find, I find it really hard to get east to west on my bike. I usually get, I usually try and do it and end up getting stuck in, like, going around in circles and dead ends and stuff, so I think it'd be great. Thanks.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, thank you guys for the work and, you know, for the really impressive presentation, and one of the things that struck out to me that I was kind of impressed by was, you guys are being flexible, and, you know, not necessar, you know, if you get feedback, you're willing to tack and do more research and get more input before committing to a plan, which I think is really important. Speaking of which, one of the kind of common denominators that I seem to notice in some of the challenges sections was outreach and feedback. And you mentioned, you know, you didn't get as much feedback from the downtown business community as you wanted, there was one of the projects where you didn't get as much feedback from the Stanford community as you wanted. Are there things that, looking back, didn't work, and how are you kind of changing your strategy to make sure that, you know, we, it's hard. We can do, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make a drink. I mean, we can have all the meetings we want, and we can send out a lot of notices, but, you know, sometimes folks just are really busy and don't really feel like engaging with the city on some of the projects we're working on. You know, what are you guys doing to try to improve that, moving forward?
So I can talk about the general challenges, and then I'll let Sarah talk about our plan to perform a little better in the future. Generally, you know, it's hard to get folks interested in a project that's just a concept. You don't want to go to the community with something already written down, and, you know, get the reaction that we haven't, you haven't consulted with us. But at the same time, you have to bring something to the meeting to help people get interested. So it's really hard, especially when you have this number of projects going on, to do the kind of targeted outreach that needs to be done, and to get people excited. And to be honest, the projects move fairly slowly when you're not in the transportation sector, you know, it's hard to understand why something moves as slowly as it does. So, I think our biggest challenge has just been getting people excited, and getting them come out on a regular basis, and providing enough information that they can help us make decisions without feeling like we've already moved too far along, without getting their input.
Some of the plans that we have to improve outreach include, whenever we have a community meeting in the evening, doing school-based outreach. Often, our meetings are at elementary schools, or middle schools, or high schools, and just setting up information on our projects during the pickup and drop-off hour is relatively easy to do, and it will help us reach parents and the school community who often can't attend an evening meeting. We're also working to make our plans available. For example, our Churchill plans from Thursday, and the Park Boulevard plans from our earlier meeting, those are up on the website. That hasn't always been the case, and we are asking people who come out to those meetings, share them with your neighbors, share them with your friends, share them wide and far, and get folks to give us their thoughts and feedback. We want to meet people where they are, and where they can review our plans most convenient for them. We're also looking at a pilot program to use 3D virtual reality kiosk to improve outreach. This is something that's been used in San Francisco on their Better Market Street study, and on a BRT project, as well as by FEMA in Marin County on sea level rise. And it's a way to engage people in the immediate project area where projects are proposed, putting out a kiosk, which allows the public to learn more about a project, and answer a survey, and provide input right there on the spot. So, those are generally our ideas.
Great.
I look forward, anybody has any others, we welcome them.
It sounds like you've put a lot of thought into it. Are you guys also reaching out to, you know, your more traditional, the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Business District, the Calav, or Business Association, that doesn't exist, but the leaders on Calav, the Stanford Residents Association, and some of those types of groups to hopefully push out communication through their channels?
Yes, definitely.
Great.
And also on Nextdoor, just all of the different medias that our community members are using.
Perfect, perfect. And then, Josh, I think you'd mentioned tactical urbanism as a possible way to get folks' attention, and that caught my attention. What kind of thoughts did you have in mind?
So, before joining the city, I was fortunate to work on a project down in Morgan Hill, where for an entire weekend, the Downtown Business Association of Volunteers actually went out and repurposed two travel lanes on Monterey Road, which is their main street downtown. They did, you know, an expanded sidewalk on one side, and they did a protected bike way on the other side, and they left it in place the entire weekend. We set up booths along the roadway, you know, little kiosks where people could stop and give us feedback on what they liked, which one they liked better, what some of the challenges are. That's kind of the new practice in planning, is to do these, you know, on-the-ground demonstrations. People, it's hard to ignore, you get really valuable feedback, you learn lessons in real time, and you can actually, you know, evolve your plan, you know, in process.
If I can just sort of add to that, this sort of hip emergent term over the past two years, you know, in planning, so not just in transportation planning, and again, as Josh was saying, the idea of, rather than having to go out with a full-blown process and adopt a policy and do a permanent thing to just sort of test things out in a short period of time, just to see what happens.
Yeah.
And it's a lot easier to try something, it doesn't work out, just move away from it.
No, I think it's a great idea, you know, I mean, for people psychologically, they know it's just temporary, you know, you can learn a lot, you actually see what the impact is. I saw a lot of articles around the Papal visit to Philadelphia, where they were going to close down like a five-mile, by a five-mile stretch of Philadelphia, and I think beforehand, you know, there's a lot of concern about it, and then afterwards, now there's actually a proposal to do that on a, to close down the streets in downtown on various weekends on a permanent basis. And people wanted to implement it next year, in 2016, and then, I think the mayor came out and said, "Next year, let's do it right now." So, you know, clearly, the experience that people had from that was a lot more freeing than they were expecting, but you don't know that until you have to do it. And so, it could be a fun way for us in Palo Alto, the heart of Silicon Valley, to experiment a little bit, and just kind of test things out and see how it works. So, I'll be curious to see what ideas you guys come back with.
Councilmember Wolbach.
First, just want to say thanks on a few things, and just highlight and encourage a few things to continue. First, actually, to the city manager and also staff, really want to say thanks on that contract with Vymoc for the pedestrian bike counters. Thanks for going back and working in some privacy language into the contractual language. You know, just to confirm that, you know, resident privacy will be not an issue with those bicycle and pedestrian counters. I really appreciate looping back on that. Also, the stress mapping and the community feedback, so that people can, you know, report on, as you were saying, report on their rides, and identify weak points on their bike routes, really great idea, really want to encourage that. As a couple others have mentioned, the Class Four bike lanes, very exciting, just absolutely has my very strong support. I'm ambivalent, but interested in, you know, considering more about this question of whether we want to, you know, add, you know, more bike lanes and more protected bike lanes on roads like Al Camino and Middlefield, or whether we should try and encourage those bicyclists onto other streets. I think that there are strong arguments on both sides, but I definitely understand them, and look forward to a more robust conversation about that. It's a tricky question, and it might vary from arterial to arterial. As far as the Matadero Creek Trail or the mid-town connector, I'm glad that you're utilizing a Citizens Advisory Committee, given the potential for that, but also some of the concerns from people, especially who live right adjacent to the creek. I think it's important to get that community input, I think that'll be invaluable. As far as your coordination with other cities and other agencies, again, just want to say thank you for that. When it comes to coordination, one thing, and I'm sorry, I missed just the first couple minutes of your presentation, so if you had already addressed it, please just say that, and feel free to not say any more, but I'm curious about coordination between our, you know, our bicycle plan and also our shuttle plan. I know that we're starting to put together a five-year shuttle plan that looks at some potentially significant improvements, changes, revamps, which I'm very, very excited about and curious about, how that intersects with our bike and pedestrian plans, including routes and also storage capacity on our shuttles. You know, in time with that, you know, the same thing, you know, how are we working with the TMA, and also with Stanford, especially around their Marguerite, when it comes to bikes and pedestrians, and making sure everything's, you know, is working well. Couple other things, as far as bike shares go, I think one of the keys is, especially as we're talking about, you know, people who, as Councilmember Phil Seth pointed out, use bike share potentially as a last-mile solution, right? They take Caltrain into town, or some other transit into town, get off of some inner-city transit and hop on an intra-city mode, which is a bike share. You know, they're then, you know, starting from a hub, which is, you know, a transit point like Calav Train Station or Downtown Train Station, and they're hopping on a bike and going out on spokes to wherever their workplace is. So, you know, that makes it hard to set up, you know, bike share stations at every single business around town. So I think the key might be really making sure that we have affordable day rentals through our bike share, so you can pick up the bike at the start of the day, go to work for the day, and return it. So, you know, a cheap 12-hour, 24-hour pass might really be a useful thing to explore. And just one other thing, so I'll admit, I actually spend more time on another kind of vehicle with two wheels, which is a motorcycle, than I do on a bicycle. When it comes down to, you know, prioritizing between the two, I definitely think as a matter of policy, we need to give the priority to bicycles. One thing I just want to make sure is considered, when you reduce the width of motor lanes, the space for lane sharing, especially, you know, at red lights, is reduced for motorcycles. I know this is a controversial issue, but the evidence is in that lane sharing, especially at red lights by motorcycles, actually dramatically improves safety for motorcyclists, also reduces the stack of cars, and improves traffic. the stack of cars and improves traffic. So it might be worth it to narrow the lanes, for instance, on San Antonio, as you had mentioned, to improve bicycability or bikability, but I just want to make sure that, you know, maybe just, you know, quick, you know, consideration of the other two-wheeled riders out there. But again, my priority is still going to be for the bicycles, even though I'm less of one of them myself. Yep, that's it for my questions and thoughts. If you have any thoughts on any of those topics, feel free to chime in. Otherwise, let it go on to the next person.
In regard to the shuttle plan, that's being managed by my group as well, so I definitely will look for opportunities to coordinate shuttle and bike planning as much as possible. I don't know what that looks like right now, but I think it needs to be done.
Well, thank you very much. Before we get to our two speakers we have this evening, we have just a handful of things I guess partly a segue from Councilmember Wobuck's question is, I couldn't remember if Marguerite shuttles have bike racks on them. I know our Palo Alto shuttles don't. And just because we're using a shuttle doesn't mean, especially like just say on Stanford campus in the industrial park, if you're landing at a spot, you might still have a ways to go. So is there talk of putting bike racks on either one of those vehicles?
So the shuttle planning effort that we're kicking off is going to look at everything under the sun. Any kind of improvements we can make to the shuttle service are on the table, so I think adding bike racks would certainly be something that would be appropriate to look at as part of that effort.
So bike racks are under the sun. I want to reemphasize what comments have been made about separating, and I've spoken about this for a long time, as some of the rest of us have too, about the importance of separating bicycles from vehicular traffic. And, you know, I was at Bull Park this weekend, for instance, and, you know, that trail that gets used through there, it gets used a lot. Now, it does go to a high school, so that accentuates it, but just having that access, you know, the one that goes to Palley is off-road too, it just, it makes for so much safer and more pleasant and less stressful transit, so it's really wonderful. The other thing about separating them is if we could do something to more physically separate, so sometimes we might have pretty great constraints on how we can separate or how much we can separate them, so if we can look at plantings to help separate and better delineate, better delineate what the separation is, that would be really helpful. How did the Google funding come to be?
That was before my time. I don't know if... I was actually the project manager on the consultant side for those projects, and I think there was just some coordination with the city, with Google expanding to, you know, new locations in Mountain View. I think they saw it as an opportune moment to help accelerate some of the planning for bikeways in South Palo Alto. They would help their employees access their different locations.
Go forth and duplicate. To go on with Councilmember Berman's comments about Stanford, and whether it's Stanford or wherever, like, some of the mapping just doesn't exist on here. And Stanford's a little complicated because you can have a roadway and all of a sudden it becomes inaccessible to cars. So it seems like it'd be important to have those included on a map like this, so that you can figure out where, you know, connectivities are and could be and should be. And, yeah, these kinds of projects take a long time, too, and this goes broader than just on campus. But these projects do take a good, long while. At the same time, development happens, and sometimes we don't get the plan out there and kind of aggressive about putting a plan out there, we're precluding opportunities as a part of development projects. So I would hope that we could get a little bit more aggressive in getting our plan out There's a, something else that's been at play in the Parks and Recreation Commission and Department that still hasn't happened, but I'm hoping will happen. The map that you've provided does indicate where schools are and indicates where parks are, but there's an app that's been talked about for probably four years now, three years at least, probably like four years, that would show you where pedestrian bicycle paths are and also where parks are and where community facilities are. And coordinating that kind of an app would be so helpful. And a more recent comment has been to add where art installations are too on that same app, app map. So I think, yeah, and just to reiterate one of Councilmember Bird's comments about the High Street, that's something that's been lingering around for a while, and it does, I'm glad to hear you're going to be considering that because it does, I think, merit discussion. So with that, if, I don't know if you have any responses to any of that? It's mostly comments than questions, so. With that, we have two members of the public. You'll each have three minutes. Robert Neff to be followed by Cedric de la Bergerie.
First, I wanted to say that the recent work on our bicycle network has just been outstanding. The updates to the plan lines, particularly on Wilkie, have focused on effective improvements that will make the route safe and also very efficient for traveling on a bicycle. And I was at the recent community meeting for the Churchill Caltrain Plan, and I've been to three of those, and that was the first time that the real-world issues of Palley bicyclists were really addressed in the plan. It was so good to see. And I think it was treated, you know, that there's hundreds of bicyclists coming out of Palley, and we have to deal with them as traffic. We can't just decide that they are kind of, I don't know, ferries or something. But we have to have space for them in the street, and I think the plan will, that was, will start the conversation of how to do that best. I was impressed with the materials and the tone of education and collaboration that, at that community meeting from all of the city staff that was there. Let's see. So our bike plan provides a blueprint for projects to pursue, and at this time, we're about four years away from when that was adopted, was, inputs were given and then the plan was adopted in 2012. I think it's apparent there's a few important areas where we can make improvements, but they're not in that bike plan. And so I think city staff and council can think about ways of adding a few more areas. And I have a couple of ideas, but maybe there are some others as well. One is that the Newell Road Bridge Plan connects a bike path on the Palo Alto side with a bike bridge over 101 that East Palo Alto's building, yet it does not include bike lanes. The EIR doesn't include enough roadway width to really fit standard bike lanes. That may be worth addressing. Second, as an example, on South California, south of El Camino Real, there's nothing in the bike plan. We didn't, it wasn't, no one brought it up at the time. But actually, there's Stanford Housing going in at the end of South California, and they're building a bike lane partway up the street, and then there's a gap, but it's not in the bike plan to actually close that gap in a bike path. And so we should think about, what's the process for making amendments to that bike plan to move forward? I'm glad to see the progress on the plans. I'm enjoying the improvements on Meadow and on El Camino Way every day, and it's far safer than it was just four years ago. I'd encourage the city to move forward as quickly as possible on detailed designs, maybe by doing more of the design in-house instead of contracting out, and maybe that's the way we can move forward more quickly and maybe develop design expertise with the existing staff with the city. Finally, I wanted to mention Vision Zero. One, it's a, Vision Zero is this idea of we should figure out how to minimize the number of traffic accidents and fatalities, serious injuries that happen to automobiles, bicycles, and pedestrians. And I think the first part of that is getting good data. And Mountain View and San Jose are moving forward with this. Mountain View now is presenting every quarterly the list of all the serious accidents. Oops, I'm off time. And so is San Jose, and it's a good way to see what we can do to move forward. And finally, thank you for putting the Transportation Department onto the PA 311 system. I'll use it.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Cedric de la Bergerie, who comes to us fresh from Make a Difference Day and a major canopy planting. Thank you, Cedric.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming out to the canopy planting at Bull Park. So I don't have much, but Park Boulevard, I'm kind of concerned about the new development that's there. I mean, it looks beautiful, but I'm afraid it's going to dump a lot of traffic on the park, which is a main accessway. So I was thinking that, you know, if there's any changes we want to make to park, we might want to do them as quickly as we can so that new residents, they come to live there, know what they're getting into, so they don't like move in and then we say, "Oh, we want to put a bunch of speed pumps," and they're like, "Ah, she's freaking out," you know. So if you get those changes in first, you know, then they'll move in, they're already there, existing conditions, they'll be more comfortable with what's there. On the bike share, the ubiquity of stations is really key. Paris is a really great system. Obviously, it's a much different city. It's a huge city, but I was there a year ago or so, and within, anywhere I wanted to be, within a five, 10-minute walk, there was a bike share station. I used to take the metro every time I went to Paris. It's stinky, it's crowded, it's hot. I'll take the bike share from now on. It was great, really wonderful experience. So having stations everywhere you need to go is important. And then the cost was something like $10 for a week of rental, and you had the first half hour free of your ride. So in pretty much anywhere you needed to go, it was in about a half hour or so. It was a really great system. On the, someone mentioned the possibility of closing streets on some occasional basis. That can be really controversial, but it can also be really successful. Curitiba, Brazil, did an experiment with that in the '70s, and drivers and businesses freaked out, you know, "Hey, you're going to destroy our city." And, you know, the mayor and the, you know, managed to do it anyways. And now, whatever, 40, however, you know, now, as there a couple of years ago, it's full of people, full of shoppers. It looks like downtown Palo Alto extremely successful, and it goes for miles and miles and miles. I also would support the Vision Zero. I think that's a great project. And thanks to the city staff and council for all your supportive comments. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you to staff, Sarah and Josh both. You've got a good plan in front of you, and I think you heard some very positive comments tonight from councilmembers as well as publics.
Mayor Holman, could I ask one question that they could get back to us with?
Sure, of course.
Can we close down streets? I occasionally see people riding under Oregon with the overpass where it's unbelievably unsafe. Is that something we could do, is just say, "No bikes?" And you can answer that at another time. You don't have to answer it tonight.
Well, can I just, can I just add as a follow-on to that, that San Francisco does something called Sunday Streets, and they move it all around town, and, you know...
Simply says, "No bikes."
They open the street up to pedestrians, skateboarders, you know, whatever, and have all kinds of activities, but it's really...
No, she was saying the opposite.
Yeah. I'm saying, can we say certain, on certain streets, "No bikes"?
Oh, "No bikes." I see. You were saying just the opposite.
Not more bikes, no bikes.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess you could do one or the other. So, okay, so staff will come back with response to both of those, I guess.
We won't do both of those simultaneously.
Could make for interesting signage, couldn't it? Okay, great. Thank you very much. That takes us to item number two, which is appointments of candidates for the Architecture Review Board and the Planning and Transportation Commission. Councilmembers, we have ballots in front of us, and I don't see lights from anyone, but as we say when we interview folks, it's really important to realize that it's not a slam dunk usually in making these decisions, and encourage anyone who maybe doesn't make it this time to apply again. So with that, we will go to agenda changes and deletions while clerk is counting the votes, and knowing of none, we will go then to city manager comments. Jim, city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. David, you can help me with something. I will start elsewhere, first of all. I'll read something else while you're doing that, David. Does that work? The, you probably saw out front, the finishing touches are going up on the temporary art installation for the Rondo sculpture, which actually I think does look quite nice in front of City Hall. There will be, again, a reminder of a public opening celebration for the sculpture this Thursday, October 29th, at 5:30 PM, and the artist, Bruce Beasley, will be there. We'll have live music, and there could be more to learn about the artwork that will remain until there, until September of 2016. Just a reminder that the city will be honoring veterans at a special recognition ceremony on Monday, November 9th, prior to your council meeting on King Plaza. We'll be honoring all armed forces veterans, active-duty National Guard and Reserve military service members. The event will start at 4:00 PM, followed by a color guard, and the city council will also read a proclamation at its meeting, starting around 5:45 PM. So we invite and encourage all veterans within the community to attend as part of this recognition event, and there's more information on our website under Veterans. We good to go? Make a Difference Day. Last Saturday, more than 220 volunteers came together to participate at various service project sites as part of the Make a Difference Day. This is the 24th year since National Make a Difference Day was initiated. I mentioned it at the last council meeting or the one before that. Projects in Palo Alto included canopy tree planting. There were 75 volunteers for the planting in Barron Park, and 60 trees were planted and 45 other plants, Sunrise Senior Center, the Palo Alto Junior Museum, Avenidas Random Axe of Flowers, and other locations around town. There also were a number of project sites and neighborhoods in our neighboring sister cities of East Palo Alto and Menlo Park. So thanks to the many organizations and individuals who participated to truly make a difference. Cal Avenue Halloween. Make a Difference Day, or is that Halloween? Make a Difference on Halloween. Okay. Yesterday, lots of kids and their families joined the fun with Halloween celebrations on California Avenue with one of Palo Alto's really most popular Halloween events for the whole family, the 21st Annual California Trick or Treat and Blossom Festival. It's organized every year by Blossom and supported by the Cal Avenue merchants in the city. Do we have just the one photo? Pardon me? Okay, and then the next one is just a follow-up to the announcement I made about the Repair Cafe event. There's a picture of the mayor with Peter Skinner at the event yesterday. And as I've mentioned before, we introduced the first Repair Cafe in 2012, following the debut of the concept in the Netherlands. We certainly appreciate his dedication to Repair Cafe and do understand that he will be moving away from our town down Monterey Way. And then lastly, the city is hosting the Building Carbon Zero California Conference, Building Carbon Zero California Conference, November 13th, and featuring keynote speaker Diana Urje Forsatz, a lead author of the Nobel Peace Prize-winning report from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. Recognizing the implications that buildings have for affecting climate change, this conference brings together national and international speakers to talk about the ergonomics, mechanics, health, and comfortability of sustainable and passive housing design. We've asked the mayor to help kick off the conference, and attendees are invited to join former Mayor Peter Dreckmeyer on a pedal house bicycle tour of five completed buildings in Palo Alto on the next day, Saturday, November 14th. So for more information on the event, complete list of speakers, conference agenda, tickets, visit CO20CA for California.org, CO20CA.org for a complete list of speakers. And that's all I have to report.
Councilmember Berman, you had something to add?
Yes, just a quick thing. I was going to mention this at the end of the meeting, but since the city manager brought it up...
but since the city manager brought it up, so the, the Cal Ave Trick or Treat and Blossom Festival was awesome, one thing that I would suggest, and I don't know to what extent the city's involved in the planning, uh, but the intersection at Cal Ave and Birch, which is where the, the farmer's market ended and the, the children's festival began, we should probably, there needs to be more, uh, kind of guidance of traffic there because I thought when I walked past it, this is a terrible idea, you've got cars coming through and so many little kids and, and that kind of thing, and then I heard the same thing from family that was there that morning also, so that's something to consider for, for next time.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you, and I guess it shouldn't go without comment that councilmembers, Niss and DeBois and I were at Palo Alto High School Friday doing the, um, judging for the dances and, and floats for Spirit Week and what a talented community of youth we have, pretty amazing. So, uh, with that, we go to-
I have it all on my phone if you want to watch it.
So we go now to the city clerk, do you have, uh, results of the votes for ARB and Planning Commission?
Yes, I do. For the Architectural Review Board, Councilmember Berman, voting for Peter Baltay, Robert Goyer and Alexander Liu. Councilmember Burt, voting for Peter Baltay, Robert Goyer, Alexander Liu. Councilmember DeBois, voting for Peter Baltay, Robert Goyer and Alexander Liu. Councilmember Philseth, voting for Peter Baltay, Alexander Liu and Flor Schmidt. Mayor Holman, voting for Peter Baltay, Robert Goyer, Alexander Liu. Councilmember Niss, voting for Peter Baltay, Robert Goyer, Alexander Liu. Councilmember Scharf, voting for Peter Baltay, Robert Goyer, Alexander Liu. Vice Mayor Schmidt, voting for Peter Baltay, Alexander Liu and Flor Schmidt. Councilmember Wolbach, voting for Peter Baltay, Robert Goyer and Flor Schmidt. Peter Baltay with nine votes, Robert Goyer with seven and Alexander Liu with eight are all appointed to the Architectural Review Board.
Thank you and congratulations. And Planning and Transportation Commission?
I do. Councilmember Berman, voting for Asher Wald Vogel. Councilmember Burt, voting for Asher Wald Vogel. Councilmember DeBois, voting for Asher Wald Vogel. Councilmember Philseth, voting for Asher Wald Vogel. Mayor Holman, voting for Asher Wald Vogel. Councilmember Niss, voting for Asher Wald Vogel. Councilmember Scharf, voting for Asher Wald Vogel. Vice Mayor Schmidt, voting for Asher Wald Vogel. And Councilmember Wolbach, voting for John Hamilton. Asher Wald Vogel with eight votes is appointed to the Planning and Transportation Commission.
Congratulations also and, um, I look forward to getting sworn in. So with that then, we go to oral communications, I have but one card under oral communications, which is Stephanie Munoz and you all have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Holman and councilmembers. I'd like to report on you, to report to you, on a educational forum that our state senator had recently, uh, and, uh, with it being on a Monday, you couldn't very well go, so I thought I'd, um, I didn't think I had to go, all I needed to do, I thought, was just call the office and make sure that the question I wanted to ask, it was in a, one of those question formats where you write little cards, that the question format I was going to ask was one of the one, was one of the questions that was going to come up because you know the way that they do these, they, um, they have cards that you, that you fill, that you write in these questions, but some of the cards, they have, and pectoral, some of the cards they have to begin with, and the whole point is to get the thinking of these important people out so that the people can understand what's going on. Well, there wasn't anybody in the office that was, knew anything about this, uh, about what was going to happen, all the knowledgeable people were up at Cunyatta College preparing for it, so I went. And I filled out a couple of cards and as it happened, I sat way down in front, I was within stone's throw of the speakers and I filled out a card and I, I filled out a couple of cards and I hung on to them because I could see the possibility of just simply handing it to the moderator or senator. And, and several people came by and said, we really want those cards, don't, don't try to give it to him, just, just give them to us. What could I say? I gave it to him and then I anxiously watched because my question was had to do, as you can imagine, about teacher housing and, and whether the state was going to do anything so that the school boards and the cities, uh, would, um, take up that idea. Well, the hour went on, the, um, the main speakers, there were Torlaxen, the, the state education supervisor and, and, and Campbell, San Mateo County, and Amanda Gurnan from, um, Santa Clara County. And, um, and they said, everything that you could imagine, even phonics, people in the audience wanted to know about one thing and another. Well, early on, our state superintendent of instruction, Mr. Gudwin, um, said, well, you know, there's also the problem of, uh, how we're going to manage without teachers when the teachers don't have any place to live. I thought, he's asking for my question now, and so I kept watching and here, and our senator was just looking carefully through these cards, I could see them, he wasn't ignoring them or just taking the first one that came along and he ne- the question never came up. So I talked to Mr. Gudwin afterwards and I said, this problem of teachers not having any place to live, what's happening? And he said, well, that conversation is going on at higher levels. Well, yeah, well, wha- what, but, but, I mean, I'd be glad to contribute to that conversation, although it's obvious. That's my thought. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much and Rita Verall, please.
Good evening, I'm here again to keep the subject of de-watering, uh, before the city council. While I was, uh, gone on vacation, uh, one of my friends, Judy Fields, a Palo Alto resident, took, uh, 13 of the 15, uh, de-watering sites that were, um, either in progress or certified for 2015. And she put together a, um, list of the square footage of the house and then the square footage of the basement. They're actually really astounding, 1950 Newell, square footage of the house was 3508, square footage of the basement was 2973. This is a huge basement, this is twice the size of my cute little bungalow. 1405 Harker, square footage of the house was 3460, square footage of the basement was 2104. 713 Hampton, Southampton, square footage of the house was 3550, square footage of the basement was 2755. The, um, largest was at 736 Garland, which I just believe is, was torn down and is just getting started, was, um, the square footage of the house was 3691, square footage of the basement was 3545. At, uh, 10, 1210 Newell, the project right across the street from the main library, uh, square footage of the house is 3376 and square footage of the basement is 2491. Judy did not, um, look up how deep the basements were, uh, but if you go to the one on 1210 Newell, you can see that the, the basement is still being made, they have the wooden structures up and, um, it certainly looks deeper than 10 feet. So I have not checked these, but Judy is very accurate and so I do believe that these are, um, probably fairly accurate. Also in the paper this last week was an article on the dying trees in Palo Alto and I can't help but somehow think that the amount of water that is being pumped out for these basements, uh, in some way could be contributing to the problem of the dying trees. I suppose that the, somebody would have to take a map of all the projects, figure out how much exactly water has been pumped out, estimated to be eight to 10 million gallons per project and then pinpoint the dying trees, but I think, certainly think that in times of drought, this is not a good practice. Thank you very much.
A question for you, Councilmember Burt.
Can you confirm, are those all two-story homes?
Um, I don't know how tall they are. I know that the basements are this size and the footprint of the house is that size, I don't know if they're two-story or not.
Oh, I'm sorry, so that figure, your, the home was the footprint, not the floor area necessarily?
Um, what she wrote was the square footage of the house.
Okay, square footage is normally total-
From the ground up.
-floor area, not footprint.
Does that, does that make sense, from the ground up?
Um, uh, that would be footprint, I think, is maybe what she's meaning, not floor area. Thank you, but we'll, we'll check on it, thanks.
Okay. And also, um, excuse me, the public should know that the issue of de-watering is going to Policy and Services Committee on December 8th. So, okay. Thank you and having finished, finished oral communications, we'll now go to minutes approval. And we have minutes for May 18, May 26, May 27, June 1 and June 8. Uh, do we have any councilmember comments or motion?
I would move approval and I'd also like to speak to that.
Speak to the minutes?
Speak to the process.
Okay, so, uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Niss to move approval of the minutes, a second by Vice Mayor Schmidt and Councilmember Niss, you wanted to speak to your motion.
Let me speak to it afterward, vote and I'll just make a comment.
Okay, all right, so, uh, we have a motion and a second, no lights, by councilmembers, so vote on the board, please. Councilmember Niss, you wanted to speak to your motion after the vote.
I just would once again express my frustration with the lack of information in the minutes and I presume if we want verbatim, we need to talk to you, Beth, and ask to have verbatim included, correct?
That's correct.
I rest my case.
Okay, thank you. And now we move to, uh, the consent calendar. We have items four through, uh, 10. On the consent calendar, are there any, uh, any comments or any motions?
Move the consent calendar?
Councilmember, Councilmember DeBois moves, um, approval of the consent calendar, was that Councilmember Scharf with a second? Any comments to make about your motion? Seeing no other lights, vote on the board, please. And that passes un-
Accidental.
That passes, that passes unanimously with, um, all members participating, one of us twice. So, so with that then, we go to, uh, our first action item, which is adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 1879 of the Palo Alto Municipal Cod- Code, uh, related to development project preliminary review procedures. And does staff have a presentation?
All right, we'll do a, we'll do a joint and brief presentation. Uh, City Attorney Molly Stump, good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Holman. Uh, this item responds to council's direction to bring back some changes to strengthen the pre-screening process. Uh, council, uh, first reviewed this item in conjunction with, uh, potential, uh, reformation of the, uh, planned community zoning ordinance process, which the council has, has deferred to the comprehensive plan update and asked that this pre-screening, uh, review come back. Uh, so there is an ordinance before you on first reading tonight. Um, the primary change in this ordinance is to make pre-screening mandatory in four, uh, situations where there are significant, uh, projects, um, contemplated, um, and those are planned community zones, which of course are on hold at, at this time, development agreements, general plan amendments and specific plans, uh, district maps, I'm sorry, there are five, and zoning text amendments. It, the revised ordinance does retain a voluntary, um, process for any other type of, um, significant project not captured by that list. Um, we can't immediately think of what one might be, but in case there is one, there is a voluntary process, um, that, that can be used to, uh, use a pre-screening, um, for that, that type of project. Assistant Planning Director Jonathan Late is here before you to answer questions, uh, as am I, and, uh, we welcome the, the council's comments and questions.
Councilmembers, questions? Councilmember DeBois.
So if I understand, there was a change that a, a voluntary pre-screening would come to council, um, is that correct and why, why that change?
There is an app places memo, councilmembers, uh, as we looked more closely at the language and at council's recent pre-screening experience, there was some older language which we, uh, proposed to not include, which allowed the council to direct the pre-screening process through a subordinate body or to do a conjunctive, uh, meeting in conjunction with another body. And, uh, we felt that it was, uh, more in line with council's direction and more straightforward process to have pre-screening conducted by the council in, in all cases in the first instance.
So, so does that, how does that impact our agenda? Do we have, um, kind of say, over timing, if, if we get a bunch of requests for pre-screenings?
Well, the, the council always controls its agenda, the city manager and the city clerk, um, take, uh, the, the first stab at managing the council's agenda and making sure there are enough, but not too many, media items on for every council meeting.
There's no clock that we have to hear a pre-screening within a certain amount of time?
That may depend on the stage that the pre-screening, uh, comes to you, um, certainly before an application is filed, there is not. If there was a situation where there was a clock, then we would manage that in conjunction with, um, the council member who's sitting in the mayor's chair. Uh, that has not been a problem to date. Um, the, you, you can tell from the five listed types that there are not a large number of projects falling into that category, at least in recent years.
Yeah, it was the optional ones I was concerned about, right? You're saying optional ones would come to us as well?
The optional ones come to you, uh, again, there have been a few of those, but just a few in, in recent months and years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Philseth?
So thanks very much to the staff for doing this. I had a question, so in a pre-screening that comes to the council, what is the expected sort of range of outcomes from the council? I mean, I assume that one of them is to say, no, this is too far outside the envelope, right? It's going to stop here in, in its current form. What are the other alternatives?
So this is an interesting question for Jonathan, Hillary and I, we are, uh, all here with five or fewer years of experience, um, and so I've seen a few of these. These are study sessions, they, they specifically do not allow the council to take a majority vote or take action on an application, they are to provide an initial sense of the council and as I've seen them play out, councilmembers are able to express views on the project's scope, on its purpose, on its mix of uses, on its density, its relation to the surrounding community, other types of significant concerns that may arise for councilmembers such as transportation-related issues and perhaps some of your, uh, colleagues who've had, um, experience on the council may wish to add their comments as to what, how they found that process valuable. But in, in my experience, watching a few of them play out, it, it has been an opportunity for the community to, uh, to weigh in on a project, express their concerns, councilmembers to do the same and project applicants to explain a project's purpose and also to hear from, uh, officials about the sense of, of the project and to potentially respond then to early input.
So then, if the council does not vote and take a specific action on it, what is normally the next step on the, in the, in the process? Then the applicant comes back with what?
So as I've seen the process work, the, 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 an application may have been filed or an app, a pre-screening could occur and I think more generally has occurred before an application is filed, an application that can then be filed, which could be, uh, an evolution or an iteration of the project that takes into account, um, the, the feedback that's heard and then the, the project goes through the normal, uh, process, whatever that is, typically ARB, there may be also a trip to HRB or other bodies and, and then back to council. And the ordinance specifically, uh, states that the pre-screening process shall not be either a denial or an approval of a project. So it's, the council's full discretion is available to you when the project comes back for a vote.
Okay, and then last question on this topic is, once the project goes past the pre-screening into the nor- pre-screening into the normal channels, to what extent is there any sort of implicit approval from the council on this? It sounds like explicitly there's none, and implicitly?
As I've seen the process play out, council has always had additional comments, concerns, requirements when the process has come back through. I think knowledgeable developers in Palo Alto have that expectation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Niss.
Simple question. We have heard a couple of times now regarding SEQA, which is listed on the front, regarding the environmental assessment exempt from SEQA. Do you want to just put it on the record once more?
Sure. This ordinance is exempt from SEQA, both under Category 5, which there is a member of the public who commented on that, and the general rule exclusion, which is what we actually put into the ordinance itself. This is a procedural ordinance. Projects themselves will carry environmental review with them, and it might be quite substantial environmental review, whatever is appropriate for that project. But the adoption of this ordinance, which takes a voluntary process and makes it mandatory adds process, does not require any environmental review in and of itself.
Good. I think it's important that we said that out loud, because I know it has been, it has been a question. So thanks.
Councilmember Scharf.
So thank you for the revisions. I just wanted to move the staff recommendation on the motion that we, on the ordinance is revised at places.
Would you care to speak to your motion, Councilmember Scharf?
Just briefly, I remember when this came to us in Policy and Services, and, you know, I'm glad we're doing this. I think it really clarifies the ordinance. And I think it's also really important that developers can come before the council and have a pre-screening, and get a sense of whether or not their project will in fact, you know, will in fact have some possibility moving forward, or what the obstacles to it are and that. I think that's really helpful. And so I'm glad we're doing this. I think it's, I think it's good for everyone.
Councilwoman Niss, speak to your second.
I think I would just underscore what Greg just said. It has great clarity, and clearly you have gone through this and thought it through. And I appreciate the detailed information that it now provides. I don't, I think this takes it out of the question category, which it had been in before. So I'm ready to vote at any point.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea of giving an opportunity for developers to ask questions early about what issues might be important for them to think through. I have just a question that's been troubling me. In 1879-10B, it says, this is set up to deal with the issues of comprehensive plan consistency, economics, social costs and benefits, fiscal costs and benefits. And I keep coming back to cumulative impacts. I know when projects come to us, they are usually bunched in certain areas, the downtown or Cal have, and where each one of them passed the SEQA test, when you look at two or three or four together, they might not. Is that an appropriate subject matter for pre-screening?
So I guess to the extent that the council was considering a project that qualified under the pre-screening, and that was an area of concern that you thought needed to be evaluated as the project moved forward, it would be an appropriate comment to articulate that. With any discretionary project, we would evaluate, we would evaluate projects to, you know, the standards that we have for traffic growth modeling, and that would be the same for the project as it moves through post-preliminary screening. So if you're looking for us, if the question is, does there need to be something explicit in the ordinance to have a conversation about that, I would say, no, that's covered in the SEQA analysis when the project moves forward.
I guess what I would add to that is that, of course, when the city does its SEQA analysis, it needs to take a consistent and even-handed approach. However, this type of process actually provides a good opportunity for more general comments and feedback and contextual concerns from council. And I think it's worked well in that regard, just giving applicants an opportunity to get a sense of the council and what the concerns are. And those types of concerns about how a project fits in its environment and its context, I think have been made effectively in that process, and do allow a developer to have an early indication of items where the council might be focusing in a more specific and concrete way when an application comes back.
Good, thank you.
Councilmembers, before we go any further, we got a little ahead of your chair here, because we do have one member of the public who wants to speak to this item. And we came up with a motion much more quickly. So Herb Borack, if you'd come, we have three minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Holman. I oppose this proposal. Before, you have a letter from me at your places. And before getting into that, I would like to start with the memorandum you have from the city attorney at places. And one issue is to exempt projects that have preliminary review before the Architectural Review Board. The purpose of the ordinance is to focus public and environmental review of development projects on certain issues. However, in recent years, the attorney's office has admonished the Architectural Review Board that planning issues are not within their purview, that they're just design issues on development. So it's kind of strange, after having given that kind of advice over the years to the Architecture Review Board, that when you have an ordinance proposed for you focusing issues on environmental review, that somehow projects that go for preliminary review for the ARB should be exempt, when preliminary review applications before the ARB can only happen when there is not an actual project application already filed, and it's actual project application that will contain the environmental review. The maker and second of the motion made it clear at the beginning that this is for the developers, then sort of covered themselves and said, well, but it's also good for everybody. But really, this is putting in the public view what often happens outside public view, which is developers talking to council members about projects outside of the public hearing process that takes place when there is an environmental assessment available for the project, which would inform the council and the public. Also, removing the possibility of a two-step process, having your advice from the Planning Commission and others, which are there to give you advice on environmental issues, is a backwards approach. In a sense, I guess I can make an analogy with your election of mayor and vice mayor. For a long time, votes would occur for mayor and vice mayor, whether it's one ballot or 46 ballots. And there was very little talk on the council about why people are voting for anybody. And then there was concern, well, how can you have nine to nothing votes unless it was decided ahead of time outside of the council chambers? So now we have these elaborate, I don't know if they're charades, but where we have nominations, and seconds, and speeches, and councilmembers saying things. And miraculously, the same thing happens then as happens outside when you didn't have those things. And I suspect the same thing here. What the developers gain here is that they're pinning you down in public with commitments you made to them, or would have made to them if they're having private meetings with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Would city attorney care to respond to questions or comments?
Maybe just to clarify, that the ARB reference in the revised ordinance that we brought forward just clarifies that if there is already a pre-screening before the ARB, then it would not participate also in the voluntary part of the council pre-screening. The mandatory section is the same.
Councilmember Hobach.
I just wanted to say that I think this is important, you know, as we try to make sure that the community and their elected officials are, you know, taking a leading role in determining and influencing, you know, what the future of our community looks like. I think that this is really important, especially for these major projects. I could think of, you know, some cases in the not-so-distant past, when if we'd had a pre-screening, I think it would have avoided a lot of concern and consternation by the community about projects. And we did have ourselves a pre-screening not long ago about a development at Al Camino and Page Mill Road that I think was a very useful meeting. We'll still, we still have yet to see what feedback offered by councilmembers at that pre-screening is, you know, taken to heart by the developer. But I think it was a good chance for the community and the council to express some of our concerns, and, you know, perhaps nudge the developer in a different direction. And I'll be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, I just wanted to go back and make sure I understand the process for this issue of the exception for projects that go before Architectural Review Board preliminary review. So are we saying that...
Councilmember Burt, it might be helpful to refer to the section, if you have that.
Yeah, it would be D3. At the at places memo, page 3. So I just want to make sure I understand this process correctly. Is it that if they are projects that are already authorized to have an ARB pre-screening, they are not eligible for the voluntary one? Or can you clarify that?
So the reference is to the Municipal Code Section 1876-020, and that is a section that deals with architectural review. And in the Architectural Review section, there is a path for an applicant to seek a, what's called a preliminary review. It's a informal process by which somebody who's just going to AR, Architectural Review, can get some early feedback. And a similar concept, that might result in some design changes, community members might have some concerns that they can articulate. And then, after that feedback is received, they go through their standard Architectural Review Board process. I think what is the purpose of this section is to just distinguish, that is an existing codified section of the code that is not implicated by any changes that are taking place here today. And if you're concerned about workload, your workload would definitely increase if you wanted to see all the Architectural Review preliminary reviews, because we do get a fair number of those.
So it would be one thing if we wanted to see all of them, but are we saying that an applicant cannot come before the council? So say they have a large project, but it would be subject to ARB review, and they're concerned about a contentious, potentially contentious nature to what they want to do. And they want to get a sense of not just whether ARB would support it, but whether at a conceptual level, early in the process, before they spend a lot of money, they want to know that, a sense of the council. Would this deny them the opportunity to come to the council for that pre-screening?
So I would direct you just further up on that page 3, to section in the middle of the page there, D, and D1 and 2. So D says that for, outside of these mandatory reasons, D suggests that any pre-screening may be initiated for an application that is a major alteration or expansion of an existing use, which implicates major land use or other policy or planning concerns, subject to the following requirements. And it sets forth the requirements by which one of those types of projects could go forward.
But down on 3, it says accept.
So 3 is a, excuse me for interrupting, but 3 is, is just making a distinction that if you're, if you're just seeking, and we should probably change the terminology to match the code, and the code here says preliminary review. Well, what we're saying is that if you're, if you're trying to apply for a preliminary review under the Architecture Review Board, you don't have to come to the city council, but you may if you qualify under subsection D.
So we're still saying that they may?
The language as drafted suggests, I believe what it's intended to capture is that if the application, and it does need to be a filed application in order to get to ARB, if it qualifies for preliminary review under ARB, that that's where it goes. You don't need to do it that way. You could, you could make several different choices. You could give the applicant an option to decide instead to go to council, or the prior language that was drafted there had the council deciding whether to hear it itself or to send it to ARB. And we, in talking through the mechanics of that, thought that that posed some challenges and some coordination and confusion. So the proposal is to streamline that and to send those to ARB, just the ones that focus on the architectural issues. If you wish to make a different policy choice, you can do.
Well, that's, but my question was, and I think you just now have answered it, my question is whether the applicant would have the discretion to go to council under this language. And I think you said that they would not. Is that correct?
So that's the way the language is drafted now. Subsection 3 is a limitation on D, and so it would send those architecturally, architectural review eligible projects where an application has been filed and is just AR review to ARB, and not to council. That's correct.
Okay. So I'll just say to my colleagues, I'm in my own mind thinking through the pros and cons of this. And I want to make sure that we're cognizant that that's what this language would stipulate. So if somebody had a big project that was, they thought was potentially contentious, and they don't want to spend a ton of money based on just a nod from the ARB on a pre-screening, they instead would like to get a pulse to the council, we wouldn't allow them to do that in this circumstance, unless we, with this language, is what I think I just heard. That's my understanding. They can't get both. If I didn't understand the city attorney correctly, then please correct me. And what I think I heard was the, Jonathan described it differently from the city attorney, and maybe we need to make sure that the two parties are aligned in their interpretation.
So if council wants to clarify what your preferred rule will be, we will go back and have an extensive discussion, which is what we do at the staff level, to make sure that the language clearly captures that.
Yeah, but what I want to be clear on is what does this language mean, as it's proposed in the staff report?
So the ARB section is an exception. So again, the voluntary, the mandatory process is the mandatory process. All of those five types of projects come to council for pre-screening, and they're required to do that. On the voluntary process only, so it's projects that don't qualify under those five, if they're eligible for ARB pre-screening, an application's been filed and it's architectural review, it goes there. It does not, it does not have the ability to come to council for a pre-screening. If you wish to make a different rule, please let us know. That will adjust the language.
Okay, thanks.
So I think at a minimum, if it's, if we have different interpretations by staff, we need to clarify... we need to clarify the language, no matter whatever the council needs to, wants to do. I have a couple of their lights, but I actually have, in addition to Councilmember Burt's clarification, I have another one too. And that is that I cannot think of a preliminary review that has come to the council that hasn't been accompanied by a full set of full-blown drawings. And I would hardly call that preliminary review. So I had this conversation with city attorney earlier today, and I actually have an amendment to offer to the maker and seconder of the motion, which is on page one of the proposed ordinance under 1879-010A to add some words. Currently, it reads, "To maximize opportunities for meaningful public discussion of development projects at the earliest feasible time for the guidance of the public, project proponents, and city decision-makers." And to add the language that pre-screening is intended to focus on project purpose, scope, conceptual design, and other similar matters, and is not intended to involve review of complete drawings and documentation. And I'll go through that again, but again, what happens is when we get a project that is so completely vetted by an applicant, not only has the applicant spent considerable time and expense, but it really hardly presents before the council a concept or preliminary review. And what we've seen happen, or at least what, I'll speak for myself here, what I've seen happen is it seems like from that point on, very little changes about a project unless the council really dislikes the project. So at a preliminary base, on a preliminary basis, we're really almost giving the indication that the council supports the project as it was presented. So again, my proposed amendment is, at the end of A, is preliminary review is intended to focus on project purpose, scope, conceptual design, and other similar matters, and is not intended to involve review of complete drawings and documentation. So I offer that as an amendment to the maker of the motion.
Oh, I'm actually inclined to accept it. I just wanted to ask a quick question-
Sure, of course.
If that's all right. I actually wanted to ask the planning director. So I think this also goes back to Councilmember Burt's issue. It struck me that, I agree with Mayor Holman in that my understanding of a preliminary review is that you come forward not to look at the drawings itself and not to look at the design features, because that would require all this drawing and all this investment. It would negate the benefits of a preliminary review. So, and that's why you would look differently. That's why I wanted to understand how that would work with the ARB, because the ARB is separate than that then, right? I mean, the ARB is you're looking at the architectural issues and looking at the design elements, right? So we'd have two different things. And was that your understanding of what we're doing here, is what Mayor Holman really suggested on a preliminary review? I mean, normally you wouldn't expect us to look at design stuff, right?
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. Hillary Gettle, the planning director. I think Mayor Holman makes a good point about the intent of preliminary review, and it would be fine to add it in that intent or purpose section. Alternatively, you could consider adding that in section 18.79.050, which is actually where the procedures for this preliminary review study session are noted. And if you really want to tell applicants, hey, look, we don't want to see your complete drawings, that might be a stronger place to insert the suggested language in one of those paragraphs in 050. Going back to the architectural review question, I saw some consultation here between planning staff and the city attorney. I think the section that was referred to is really, we were, we were intending by drafting that paragraph to simply say that these procedures do not apply to that process, which is a separate process established in the code for preliminary review or pre-screening, whatever it's called, of architectural review applications.
So then, any project could come to us if the applicant or council wanted it to and the applicant agreed, right?
Well, I think Councilmember Burt has pointed out a lack of clarity with regard to that one section that was added or changed in, at the bottom of page three. The intention of that section D, items one and two, was to say that any project could come, come to you if it's important enough, and in number one, if the city council and applicant concurred, and in number two, if the applicant requests it and the city council, I guess they're both concurrents with the city council. So I don't know if the two of you had some resolution on the-
We did. So the planning staff recommends, and we can certainly draft it this way, to clarify that the process, the voluntary process is available to projects that also could use the ARB pre-review process, and that we would, we would adjust the language simply to say that the use of the ARB process doesn't preclude also using this process if the applicant wishes to do so. So if council's comfortable with that, that would be the recommendation we would make, and we would make small adjustments to the language to clarify that.
So on that point, aren't they two separate processes? Like you'd have a pre-screening if they wanted to, you'd come to council, and it wouldn't involve the architectural issues. And then later you go to ARB, and that's your pre-screening focuses on the architectural issues that ARB looks at. I mean, that's the way I understood it, and that's what you're clarifying, right?
That's right. And that, Councilmember Scharf, you're leading us in an interesting direction. That raises a question about the language that Mayor Holman has suggested, because if it's possible that one of the pre-screenings that could get to council was an architectural review application, in that instance, you really would want completed drawings. The ARB would have looked at complete drawings, and the council would want to do so as well. So if we add this language, we may find, need to find a way to carve that out.
Well, now I'm actually confused.
So if I could, so the council pre-screening process is somewhat broad, it's general, you want to leave yourself discretion to address whatever project-specific issues really are raised. And so I think that's what the planning director is pointing out, that in some cases, while you're not doing a detailed architectural review, there may be some overarching design considerations that you'd like to express some thoughts on, and you don't want to preclude yourself from doing so.
So where you've left me is, I was going to ask Mayor Holman if she wanted to move this to 050. Now you're saying that we should have some carve-out language that says, except in the case where council specifically requests complete drawings?
So it's always dangerous to draft at a council meeting, but I think that the language there is general enough to allow that.
So we can, I can accept this, and you will go back and redraft?
Yes. It does not, it does not bar or ban architectural drawings. It says what's generally intended.
Well, if I can add something, there's a couple of little changes that need to happen to the language here. One is not intended to involve review of complete drawings, to involve review of complete drawings and documentation. And it seems like to me, and I want to leave this actually in 010, because that's where the purpose, that is the purpose section, and this is the purpose, right? So it seems to me it's stronger and more appropriate to keep it here. And it seems to me, based on your questions, Councilmember Scharf, and Councilmember Burt's questions, it seems like we do need to maybe come back with a carve-out for the ARB projects. Some kind of clear language that delineates the chain that those would follow. So I don't know how others feel about that. But Councilmember Scharf, it sounds like you were going to accept my amendment?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
And Councilmember Minnis, are you agreeable?
I am, and I just want to point out on this that I don't think this has happened recently. Can any of you think of a time in the last year that this has happened?
Yeah, the Page Mill, El Camino project. Not so long ago, Councilmember Welbach referenced it.
I don't remember it being, that it coming to us in this particular way. Perhaps you do, but I guess some of that then is the semantics of it, because the purpose, scope, conceptual design, and other simple matters. I'm glad to leave it in, but I think that there's going to be a lot of interpretation of this whole, of this whole ordinance tonight, because we've asked so many questions, and we've had some different answers that I think it, I'm glad to leave it as is and ask staff if they will, if they will tweak it a bit so that it's clearer to those who read it. It's, I think most of us understand it, but I think it is a different kind of document than what we've operated from before.
Happy to do that. Happy to take another look at the language. But again, councilmembers, this is not a precise recipe or formula. The process is a general one. It allows an applicant to come before you and get some general feedback, and you want to leave some discretion for yourself in the process.
Good, thanks.
So I had one other, one other question, and I actually concur with Councilmember Minnis's comments, though. Yeah, we want to leave ourselves some discretion, but we want to make sure that the process is clear enough that somebody coming forward isn't at the discretion, if you will, of depending on who's sitting in the attorney's chair or who's sitting in the planning director's chair, we want to be clear on what the process is. And then how we do the review is a whole other thing. I had one other question, though, about 1879-030 on page two, number five, zoning text amendment. So I wanted to be clear, does that mean a zone change? And if that means a zone change, you know, unless, of course, it's a PC or something of that nature, but let's just say something could be zoned RM15, and somebody comes along and wants an RM40 designation, why are we exempting that?
So that would actually come under item four, the district map amendment. So if somebody wanted to go to 15 to 40 or whatever, that would qualify under a district map amendment?
Point noted. Thank you very much. And then the other thing, and maybe this is a separate dialogue, but it's always seemed to me that if someone is going to apply for something that requires a map change or map amendment, that that ought to be on a higher level even than this. It's like, do we want to change this? Do we want to consider? And I think it would be helpful for an applicant. You know, if we want to consider, you know, moving from RM15 to RM40, why don't we look at that first instead of in conjunction with a, with a project? It seems like it would be a big waste of time on the part of an applicant if the community has no interest, or the council has no interest in going from RM15 to RM40.
I absolutely, I agree. I feel like that's what this process is, is that if the, if somebody does have an interest in going, changing the zone, that they would, you know, they'll spend some time to vet out a concept so that they're not just bringing a blank canvas to the council, but some kind of schematic of what is being envisioned. But if the council didn't have, was not interested in making that kind of amendment, I think that's exactly the kind of comment that would be helpful in this process. So I think that's what this is about, really.
Okay. And then I have lights from Councilmember DeBois, Burt, Welbach, and Vice Mayor Schmidt. Councilmember DeBois?
I'll be speedy. So following up on Mayor Holman's question real quick. So on that exemption for zoning text, why the exemption for hotels and automobile?
So we put that in there because there's an existing process in the code today that seems to, you know, my word, encourage a overlay or at least an application process for automobiles and hotels. So there's an existing policy that's been codified, and we thought that's different than some, and anticipated and studied and evaluated in public hearings, and so, you know, we have that process in place in the code today. To us, that's distinguished from an example that the mayor just brought up where I want to change from RM15 to RM30.
Okay. And then I just wanted to say quickly, yeah, my interpretation, the bottom of page three, I think was similar to Councilmember Scharf's, that if it's an ARB matter under this code, it would go to ARB, but that wouldn't preclude them coming to us in a more general manner. And I would support clarifying it like that.
Councilmember Burt, back to you.
Well, my concern was along the same line. So I do support the amendment, but it does raise the need for a clarification on the issue that I was raising before. What it seems to me is that if we, if we want to allow the applicant to come before the council instead of ARB, it should be, instead of what they would normally go to the ARB with more detailed drawings, it would be in the context of this amendment. They would come at a more conceptual stage around architectural issues, if that's what they're wanting to have addressed, but they wouldn't be necessarily full detailed architectural drawings. So I'm not sure what clarifying language we need to have in regards to what staff was already going to come back and come up with clarifying language for D three, but I think we need to be clear, if that's our intent, we want to make that clear.
So Councilmember Burt, I don't know if you misspoke or if you meant to say it that way. My view of it was you could come to council, but then you'd still have to go to ARB, that they're actually separate processes, that you can't circumvent ARB, for instance, by coming at a conceptual level here and then not have to deal with, you know, all of the architectural issues that, you know, we actually, as laypeople, may not raise.
Right. This would be a conceptual.
Yes, so-
And it would be at their discretion.
Councilmembers, the, nothing about the pre-screening process exempts any applicant from going through the mandatory steps in our code. There's also another voluntary process for ARB pre-review. And I think what we would simply say is that use of this, this process is available, and use of this process does not preclude an applicant who wishes to also use the ARB pre-review from doing so subsequent.
Okay, so we have two choices. One, that's clear, it's not really a choice, but if they elected this process, they would still have to go through the mandatory ARB. And then we have a second question that we should be considering. If they chose this process, would they still have at their discretion to subsequently go through the ARB pre-screening? And we really haven't talked about that yet.
Councilmember Welbach.
Well, picking up off of what Councilmember Burt was just pointing out in this discussion, I certainly think it is important that we don't preclude opportunities for, for city bodies to review projects as they come forward, and I want to make sure we don't preclude opportunities for projects to get an early public hearing and public airing. So I want to make sure that we've heard from city attorney that the city staff will come back with clarifying language. This is essentially first reading tonight, right? So if it's not really changing the substance, it's just clarifying the language, it could probably come back on consent, not add to our agenda, just some clarifying language around that item three at the bottom of page three, correct?
That's correct. We would make that small change and also add Mayor Holman's language on second reading, and it would come back on consent. The council could always pull it off if you were not happy with the language.
Great, great. So procedurally, we have clarity about what our next steps are with this ordinance. I appreciate that. So, yeah, I want to make sure that staff is clear. If we need to make any more amendments to the motion, let us know. And if any of my colleagues disagree, because Burt, as Councilmember Burt said, maybe we haven't discussed this enough. Again, my position is we don't want this process, this voluntary process, to preclude either mandatory or still optional review by other city bodies, including ARB. And as far as Councilmember Holman, or Mayor Holman's amendment, which was accepted, I guess I'm okay with it. If, if an applicant did already want to spend a lot of money on doing all the detailed plans and thought that that was the best way to make their pitch, I guess this doesn't preclude them from doing that. But this is, I think, actually useful, the more I think about this, this is useful because it suggests to them, maybe don't waste too much time on a project until you've gotten our review, if you're planning on getting our review. So I think that's a good addition. Thank you, Mayor Holman, for that.
You're welcome. And Vice Mayor Schmidt.
We're looking at the impact of words, and 1879-10A is purpose, defining the purpose. And I wondered if it's gotten us too narrow a focus, to focus on purpose, scope, conceptual design, rather than the architectural drawings. But I know- But I know the city attorneys mentioned several times that this is, these preliminary hearings are a wonderful time to look at the general impact on things. So I wonder if it would be helpful to put between scope and conceptual the term impacts.
If you want the maker of the amendment to comment on that, I wouldn't accept that or wouldn't think it would be a good, not my job to accept it. I wouldn't approve that because you're looking at concepts. You don't know about impacts until you actually do the full blown plans and do the environmental analysis. So then it would certainly not be preliminary. But I should ask the maker of the motion, Councilmember Scharf?
I defer to our mayor.
So council members, I would just point out that there is a catch-all there and other similar matters, which is intended to allow you some breadth in terms of the questions you wish to ask and comments you wish to make in this process.
Where is that?
After the words conceptual design, it says, "and other similar matters."
So, but if, and I'll also add to your point, item B.
Yes. I see it in item B, and I want A to be consistent with B. That's why it has been picked out in A to say that it's intended to focus. Those are pretty strong words. And it would impact how you treat B. If those words weren't quite so strong in A, that would be fine.
So could I suggest that, as I read this, it's why purpose statements are very important. As I read this, B is to focus public and environmental review of development projects and the issues of greatest significance to the community. So that says to me, it's like if you're, you know, proposing, you know, let's just say a PC that is three times zoning allowance, and I'm just making this up, it's an opportunity for the council to say, we have concerns about traffic impacts, you know, park impacts, you know, parking impacts, that sort of thing. We're not going to now analyze them or have the data at this point. So that's why I'm concerned about, you know, any addition of the word impacts in A. This is, again, it's conceptual, it's preliminary. And just one, I almost never, ever disagree with city attorney, however. However, in the amendment, it says conceptual designs and other similar matters. Again, we're at the concept stage. We're not looking at impacts, other than as are referenced in B. So.
I was trying to provide a big tent for all views. If you wish to stand outside in the rain, there might be nothing I can do for you.
One of us is standing in the rain. Vice Mayor Schmidt, are you complete or satisfied?
Well, I'm a little unsatisfied, but if there is no...
Do you feel like you're in the rain?
...second to this, I will move on.
I have no other lights. By council members, it seems as though we should give some form of direction to staff to come back with, so I guess this would be an amendment to give direction to staff. Councilmember Bert, would you care to provide language to staff as an amendment for, since you raised the issue for, that would be?
Yeah, but I'm just wondering whether we're going to be able to have this come back as a second reading in that, if we, in that way? If it's conceptual?
So again, these are voluntary processes. All you're doing, you're not regulating or adding any requirement to anyone.
Okay.
You're adding another voluntary process.
So the amendment would be to direct staff to return at the second reading with revised language to section D3, clarifying that applicants will have the option to have a pre-screening, a conceptual pre-screening before the council, in addition to an architectural pre-screening before the ARB.
Yes. That's clear. Thank you.
Councilmember Scharf, are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Councilwoman Niss, is that fine with you? And staff is finding that clear? Okay. So, seeing no other lights, what we have before us is a motion to adopt an ordinance to implement changes to the development project preliminary review procedures by amending Title 18 zoning of the Palo Alto Municipal Code. Incorporated into the motion is the preliminary review is intended to focus on purpose, scope, conceptual design, and other similar matters, and is not intended to involve review of complete design, excuse me, of complete drawings and documentation. Additionally, to direct staff to return at the second reading with revised language to section D3 on page three of the ordinance, perhaps, to have the, that applicants have the option to have a conceptual pre-screening in addition to an architectural pre-screening. With that, vote on the board, please. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, council members. So with that, then, we move then to item number 11, adoption to adopt, excuse me, recommendation to adopt a Healthy Cities, Healthy Communities Resolution to Define and Support the 2015 Council Priority Healthy Cities, Healthy Communities. And we have some staff here to make presentation and some of the public members who are here to comment or support. Rob, will you be kicking it off?
I am.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Holman, council members, Rob Degos, Community Services Department. Joined here by Lacy Courson. She's the Senior Community Services Manager, oversees the Mitchell Park Community Center, our team programs, is our health guru in our department, just going to help me with some of the slides here. Did we get it up there? Okay, good. So staff brings a resolution to the council this evening in support of the council priority Healthy Cities, Healthy Communities. The resolution is aspirational. It's comprehensive. It encourages healthy, social, cultural, and physical environments, environments that promote and support health, well-being, creative expression for ourselves, our families, and our communities. The staff presentation will give a brief background on Healthy Cities, Healthy Communities movement, a brief summary of the current practices that already exist in support of this priority. And we'll talk about the gathering and input of a diverse stakeholder, community group, and finally, we'll go over the resolution. So what is Healthy Cities? It really began in Europe, out of the World Health Organization in 1986. It was based on the concept that the social, economic, and physical environment is key to the health of residents. It takes a broad view of health, employs a cross-section of human endeavors to achieve improved health status and community quality of life. The movement has spread to more than 3,000 communities in over 50 countries. The mayor likes this quote, so we included it here. Healthy community initiatives are modern illustrations of Alexis Decavell, Decavell's 1831 observations of what made America unique and prosperous, its associated life, the way citizens come together to engage in meaningful work for the benefit of the community. Put another way, a healthy community is one in which all systems work well and work together, and in which all citizens enjoy a quality of life. So anytime we take on a new initiative or the council has a new priority that impacts the community at large, we engage the community in a conversation from the beginning. And to that end, in the spring, we put an invitation out to the community, business leaders, nonprofit partners, school district, residents, and asked that they join the city staff and the mayor and Councilmember Niss to discuss how we might strengthen the community through this new council priority Healthy Cities, Healthy Communities. So we called the group together, and we met six or seven times since spring. And this is a list of organizations and affiliations of where we got the most traction in terms of people showing up for these Healthy City meetings. It was open to all that were interested. So when the council first selected the Healthy Cities, Healthy Communities priority in their, at the retreat, I and I think many others intuitively supported the concept and thought, oh, this is a good thing. But as then time passed and reflected on that retreat and the priority, it was clear to me that there wasn't a lot of direction really there. It was a nice idea, but what did it really mean for the community and for the city of Palo Alto? So it was helpful to engage citizens and business leaders and residents in what it meant to them. And so we had some rich conversation over the spring and early summer. What we found, several things, one, this is a very, very broad topic. Arguably, almost anything we do as a city organization can be framed in some way to impact this priority. The citizens that, and business leaders that met with us were interested in discussing what Healthy Cities and Healthy Communities meant to them, their organizations. We discussed the relationship between health and happiness, chronic health issues, homelessness, the built environment, the arts, simple acts of kindness and civility and its relationship to a healthy community. I think it's fair to say these early meetings definitely were a storming phase of a group. Very interesting conversation, sharing of perspectives, and learning from one another. At this point, we could have come back to the council in reflection, probably could have been a good idea to do that at that time, but we didn't, as we said, we were storming with the community, and I wasn't really sure what we would bring back at that time, honestly. And so we felt like we should keep going, keep working, see if we can get some structure and present something to council that they can respond to and react to. So we moved on, and we began to try and define, okay, where are we today with respect to Healthy Cities, Healthy Communities? And I asked Lacy to talk a little bit about the recreation programs, and then I'll carry on.
Yeah, so we actually have done quite a bit in Palo Alto. You all live here, and so you kind of benefit from all the great things that we have available to our residents. The little pie chart that you see on the right is an example of programs, number of programs that we offer in each of those categories every season. So that's four seasons a year. So fitness, aquatics, middle school athletics, sports programs, open space offers a variety of free programs to entice people to take advantage of all the open space. We have a golf course, and of course, our gorgeous parks, all things that encourage a healthy community. In addition, we also have a variety of programs that encourage people to explore the creative expression, another element to health that's very important. So we have the performing arts, children's theater kind of takes the cake in that one, and I hope you've all been to a production or two from the children's theater. It's fantastic. Visual Arts, the Palo Alto Art Center kind of owns this space. The Friday Night, the Art Center is one of my favorites, but they also have Family Days, ceramics, exhibitions. And then also, we have the Junior Museum and Zoo. In addition to the animal exhibits, they have several educational components to those programs. So very kind of comprehensive look at health that we're offering currently from the city.
Okay, next slide. Oh, so the, sorry. The built environment is another area, of course, that's tremendously important, and we obviously involve the planning and community environment staff in this. And we had a study session this evening on bike safety and pedestrian, bike and pedestrian plan, making a lot of progress there, bike boulevards and these types of things. So, next slide. I think it was fair to say after we got to this point that the city of Palo Alto actually is very, very fortunate, and this is probably not a surprise to the council. We've invested in health in all sorts of ways over many, many years, and I think there's just a lot to be proud of here. Yet we were still at a point where, well, so what do we do with this priority Healthy Cities, Healthy Communities? So we started to take a look at other communities, other cities, what are some best practices that cities have had here? And we looked, obviously, at the World Health Organization, they had a lot of resources and material. We looked at Michelle Obama Let's Move campaign, which is another sort of related, there's a number of these. And we looked at one called Healthy Eating, Active Living, which was more local, out of the League of California Cities. Found this one pretty interesting. It was a resolution, essentially, and by the way, most of these other city efforts seem to form around some type of resolution that the city council and community would adopt and pass. And the League of California's had a similar one, and it was called Healthy Eating, Active Living, and it had three pillars around land use, healthy eating, and employee wellness. And as we discussed this with this group, this framework looked very promising, but it wasn't fully reflective of what we were hearing from the community. So we continued to adapt it. In fact, we met with the folks from the League of California Cities. They came and visited with us, and they encouraged adaptation and to make it your own as a community. Approximately 180 cities in California have adopted a resolution related to this, and they're all a little different based on specific community interests from where they are. So as we looked at what we could do here, we kept the three pillars of the environment and access to healthy food and healthy workforce, and we added a fourth section called Healthy Culture. And we think this was more reflective of our community, was more relevant, was local, certainly was also bold and comprehensive as a resolution. So that brings us to the resolution. The first section, it's called Healthy Culture, addresses elements of health that support social and emotional, mental health. Healthy culture encourages expression of creativity, supports an environment of inclusivity and kindness, and ultimately creates connection between health and happiness. And I'm not going to read the whole resolution, but you see in there things like support creativity through visual and performing arts and digital arts, create opportunities for healthy aging and aging in place, seek solutions, promote awareness and compassion for the unhoused, as a couple of examples. Here's some pictures of different things that we do in our community, and again, just reflective of the investment that we already have in health and a healthy culture. Healthy Environment is the next section in the resolution, relates to planning and prioritizing capital projects that increase opportunities for walking and biking and other forms of physical activity. It very much already exists in the existing comprehensive plan. This resolution affirms that commitment and builds upon it. Some of the items in this section include support and protect and connect us to the natural environment and cultural resources, and address walking and biking connectivity between residential neighborhoods and schools and parks and recreational resources as There's a couple more pictures of the city of Palo Alto and our built environment. Third is Healthy Food Access. This is promoting access to healthy foods, and there's a very specific and real correlation between more access to healthy foods to more healthy choices. And so this part of the resolution includes a seek opportunities for increased access to healthy foods, including prioritizing affordable, healthy food retail, include health and well-being goals and policies related to access to healthy food in the comprehensive plan. And a couple of pictures of our farmers' markets around our community. Finally, Healthy Workplace is the fourth leg of the resolution. The FY16 budget had some funding that the council already approved to support this initiative, encourage walking and biking and using the stairs, support emotional and mental health, some of the things that our People Strategy and Operations Department, Kathy Shen, who's here, can talk a little more about it if you have questions, is a walking club that's begun on Tuesdays, yoga and mindfulness programs that are starting up here at City Hall. So that's one thing that's well underway. I would add that this, this resolution or this section of the resolution really supports healthy workplace, not only for our city organization, but that we could also be a role model for other organizations in the city. There's a picture here, a few pictures that, I think the one that I'd like to point out is just the, the bottom one there, the idea that we have employees, employees that take care of themselves, that eat well, that exercise, are more productive, they're more engaged, have less absenteeism, generally more creative. So it's a good, a good business decision, I think, to, to do that. Almost finished here. Thank you for your patience. As we looked at this pretty comprehensive draft resolution, we also realistically understand that there are limited resources and a lot of competing interests and, and needs that the city have and the, and the city staff have. So we discussed, well, what might we do in the, in the first year? And, and a few of the items here that you see were selected, about seven of them that we think are, are very doable and not great impact to the general fund, but can have a, a real important impact. One of them, the first one I mentioned here is the Create a Welcome Packet for New Residents that Aries families, individuals to health and wellness opportunities in Palo Alto. We're currently updating the comprehensive plans, are very timely to be thinking about how we can promote health as we update that important plan. Advance Bike and Pedestrian Plan projects, we heard about that earlier this evening. Implement City Employee Health and Wellness Initiative. Again, Kathy Shen is here, can speak to that a little bit if, if you'd like to hear about that. We also discussed as a group, the, the idea of bringing business, businesses together and sharing best practices for employee wellness programs. We've got some really innovative businesses in this community and doing some really interesting work around employee health and wellness and what can we learn from one another. So partnering, we would like to partner with the Chamber of Commerce to, to put on a forum around that. We also, one of the biggest things that we actually were able to do was in partnership with the local Palo Alto Family Y and Lucille Packer Children's Hospital, put on a health fair that promotes health and wellbeing. And in fact, we have Jade Chow here from the board of the Palo Alto Family Y that I've invited just to say a couple of words about that health fair. I'm not sure if any of the council members were able to attend, but Jade?
I'd just like to thank the council members and mayor for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the 2015 Committee Health Fair. As the chair of the Planning Committee, I want to thank the city, the Stanford Healthcare, the Adult Hospital, as well as Lucille Packer Children's Hospital and the YMCA. They were co-sponsors of this event. New this year, we engaged our very talented youth, our Gunn and Pallie High School students who introduced and moderated the Stanford Physician Nursing and Nutritionist Teams who were speakers at the health fair. I had asked Sandra Su, who was a friend of mine and a city resident, but also a pediatric nurse over the summer, if she would train a group of high school students to be moderators. The students were very poised, very deliberate, well-prepared, and very impressive. They did a great job at the health fair. And this was one of the interesting ways we were engaging the youth in this community. Also new this year, we invited the Palo Alto nonprofits. Over 30 nonprofits came and experimented with an open house, which was very successful. Over the lunch hour, they were able to stand up and speak about the mission of their nonprofits as an opportunity to showcase to the public what services they provided. This was something that probably they would not otherwise have the opportunity to do so due to the limited resources. So I would now like to read the list of nonprofits who came and were at the nonprofit open house. Abilities United, Adolescent Counseling Service, All Care Plus, Bay Area Cancer Connection, Breathe California, Cardiac Therapy Foundation, CASP Artist Lesa Bouchard, CASP Artist Paloma in Servan, City Fire, City Open Space, City Police, City Recreation Services, City Water Quality Control Plant, Concern.com, Deborah's Palm, Healthy Transportation, Junior League, Palo Alto Mid Peninsula, LGBTQ Youth Space, Mobile Arts Platform, Palo Alto Art Center, Palo Alto Family YMCA, Project Safety Net, Rinconada Masters Program, Stanford Adult Hospital, Stanford Lucille Packer Children's Hospital, Whole Foods, Women's SV.org, Yes for Schools, Youth Community Service, and Zero Waste. On a forward-going basis, we would like to see this event be an annual event here in Palo Alto. We have also spoken to our YMCA affiliates in other Bay Area cities that a similar model might be adopted by other cities with two or three major sponsors. The local community hospital is for sure an important sponsor, the YMCA board or the local nonprofits. So here are the numbers from the health fair. We had 30 nonprofits, six pairs of student moderators, male, female, eight presenters from Stanford Adult Cardiac Therapy Foundation and Stanford Children's Hospitals, 700 participants, maybe 1,000 if the bedbugs didn't also join us at the library that weekend, causing the closure of Mitchell Park Library, five planning meetings and one site tour, over 200 hours of volunteer hours by the planning committee and the students, and oh, did I mention the Gunn High School Jazz Band played for us during lunch? So we had a great time at this event and we thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you Jade. It was a, it really was a terrific event and it's, it's what I think will progress this Healthy City, Healthy Communities initiative is, is really through partnership and collaboration because the city organization has only so many resources and staff and, and access. So maybe the best thing we can do, I think, is, is actually bring the community together and see how we might be able to work together to advance this important priority the council has, has selected. So that concludes the, the staff presentation. We're glad to answer questions. And Councilman Schaff, you sent a number of questions forward earlier today. I think some of them may have been answered throughout the presentation, but not all of them. Happy to follow up on them as you will.
Mayor.
City manager?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Rob and the team. Let me just sort of offer my perspective on this. I think when the staff began to work on this initiative and invited, you know, a cross-section of community members to, to a meeting and asked the mayor to help kick that off, I was at that first meeting and it was sort of a diffuse group of people and, you know, lots of wide-ranging interests and how to kind of, sort of strike a chord for a starting point for a policy directive on healthy cities and healthy communities. But as, as I was listening to Rob sort of talk about it, sort of work through this, in actuality, you made a lot of progress, but I, I, I came to the conclusion when I was looking at this that, you know, even the resolution itself has a lot more detail to it in some cases than sort of many of the other comparative resolutions. And in some cases, it could look to that we've moved beyond sort of value statements to implementation strategies or issues, which is why I felt it was really important that we look at referring this to committee for more in-depth discussion just because even a lot of the verbs that we actually used, you know, are, they have a directive aspect to it, I think, that, that warrants. So I think it was well-intentioned to try to be impactful, but I, I do think that it's probably a challenge, as I reread it again here tonight, for the council to be in a, I mean, there's a lot there is the, is the, is the issue. So I would sort of, I would sort of put a strong footnote on the fact that it goes to committee. I know and Councilmember Schaff, some of the questions were, there could be fiscal implications of some of these, so how does that affect budget or the finance committee and those kinds of things? So I think all of those are things that you may want to comment on, but I, I do think we want to acknowledge that we recognize that, I think there was one other one of the, the, the items that caught into some degree of specificity, but not close to what ours are and the others were a bit more general. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the council.
So if I could take a moment here and Councilwoman Niss, I'll give you the same opportunity. So I think one of Councilmember Schaff's questions was this didn't follow the normal course. I think, Rob, you've described pretty clearly how and why it didn't follow the normal course of going to policy and services first because it's like, what, what would go to policy and services, right? So I think this, I had some discomfort with that, but at the same time, I also felt like the direction that we were following was, it made a lot of sense because it gave something to take to policy and services, to, to provide some kind of direction and, and some kind of meat to, to talk about. Just a couple of the things is that you said early on that this is aspirational and maybe that ought to be more strongly stated in the resolution, but it's aspirational. This isn't like a dictate that we're going to do every one of these things. At the same time, many of the things that are in the resolution, we already do. The other thing that we agreed as, as a group, Councilwoman Niss and the stakeholders too, that, you know, this is, not that the city is going to do all of this, that the city is going to set example and, and partner with other members of the community to do some of these things because the city can't do it all. This isn't a setting of framework for, the city does a lot and what else can we do and how much more can we do and we're going to do it all. That's just simply not possible. So this is, again, setting, setting an example, setting a framework. The other thing is, just like our Urban Forest Master Plan, just like our Parks Master Plan, personally, I see this as being something that would travel along with the comprehensive plan because there's things in this, in this resolution that do, that do refer to things that I would think we would want to put in, in the comprehensive plan. Something else that was, I think, merit stating is, well, the League of Cities has, has its own Healthy City, what do you call it, not proclamation, but they have their own Healthy City program. The city of Palo Alto actually, because we're a leader in so many things, they're actually looking to us to lead and thinking that we can actually refine on what they're doing and provide even better example for, for them. So they're looking to us to see how we, how we go here. Councilwoman Niss, do you have any comments to make about the process? And then John Kelly, who is on the, on the stakeholder group is here to also speak to us.
Do you want to have John speak first? If not, I'll jump in.
Why don't you go ahead and then we'll go to John.
Okay. I, I think first and foremost, we came from a very different operative level. Healthy cities and healthy communities not only exist at the league level, but it exists in, in many different cities, some of the resolutions are here. But beyond that, so I felt comfortable with this. We're not setting a precedent. Many other cities have done this, they've done it across the country. One of the things we did throughout this is acknowledge that we are already a pretty healthy and pretty fortunate city. We have, when many cities struggle to have fresh food available, to have a farmer's market, to have something like that, that actually allows easy access to, to food like that. San Jose has worked hard to make that happen, to have, to have those food markets close by. We have easy physical exercise. It's not going to snow here this winter. We hope it'll rain, but it's, it, we don't have snow. We're not running on ice. We have, we have really a very conducive atmosphere. Beyond that, we have a very supportive community and we have a community that's evolved a lot since the seventies, when people thought that runners were rather a peculiar type, you know, and why would you do that anyway? And our biking has increased. Any number of things that we looked at indicate that we are, we are a healthy community. But I think one of the things that came out of this was to acknowledge how much we have going for us right away and then that we need to move even further with that. So as this said, to define and support this priority that we had, and as Karen reminded us at the last meeting, this is a three-year priority. It is not simply a one-year priority. This is one that will go on and I think acknowledges the importance eventually also of including it in the comp plan. Many cities now have a health component in, or a healthy city component in their plan, which is one that I would really like to see in that as well. So, thanks. I, I think we've had a phenomenal turnout at the meetings and we've had very healthy food that we've offered at the meetings as well. So we, we've really stayed within the, I think, the assignment that we had given ourselves in January as, as a priority for this year.
Thank you. And John Kelly, thank you very much for coming this evening. And as I mentioned, you're one of the stakeholders and thank you for your participation.
It's been a pleasure. It's been a real honor to participate in the stakeholder group. It sounds like the key issue you're going to decide tonight is whether you're going to adopt the proposed resolution or refer it to a committee. I guess I'd like to just speak to that directly. Both Mayor Holman and Councilmember Niss have talked about the interconnection between this proposed resolution and other policies, plans, initiatives that the city's undertaking. I would urge you to, to adopt this resolution tonight. I think it's an excellent resolution. I think that the work that the committee did in adding something that really made the, the form resolution that was available from the League of Cities more robust, particularly by including the culture section and just dealing with really basic things about how we interact with one another on the street, how we interact with one another as individuals, promoting kindness, promoting courtesy, those are things that are really fundamental Palo Alto values. I'd also like to speak to the question about whether it's even necessary to refer this to committee. There were a lot of diverse viewpoints on the stakeholder group and as the city manager said, the proposed resolution, I think the words were, there's a lot there. I totally agree with that. I think there is a lot there. The reason you should adopt this tonight is to put that before the other groups, agencies, bodies, referring entities such as the, the Citizens Advisory Committee on the Comprehensive Plan and let them know what this group has been thinking about in terms of health. That will better inform their deliberations. Perhaps the most important thing I can tell you however, is that this proposed resolution is unique in my experience in Palo Alto. I don't know how many of us there were in the stakeholder group. There were quite a few. As far as I know, we never took a single vote. We reached the, the decisions by total and complete consensus. I'll just footnote, I missed one meeting, but as far as I know, everything was done by consensus. I think that is extraordinary and virtually unheard of. So the fact that this proposed resolution comes back to the council after you said that healthy cities, healthy communities was a priority for the entire community for this year, that this proposed resolution was reached essentially with unanimity as consensus by this diverse group, shows to me that this proposed resolution reflects not only important, but deeply held common values that reflect what Palo Alto is all about. So I would urge you to adopt it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for coming, John. And there are other, a couple other members of the working group here, or stakeholder group here too. Councilmember Schaff, if you had your light on.
I did. First of all, I'd like to say that I think there's some great work that was done here and there's a lot of stuff in here that's great. I was really pleased to hear you, Rob, say that it was aspirational. So I actually could support passing this tonight if we made it aspirational. I, I think things we need to do, for instance, instead of saying, making every effort to, which, you know, as a lawyer, you'd never write in a contract, making every effort to. You'd never even write best efforts. The standard is way too high. So I would propose that if we added something along, and I don't really care what the language is, but something with the idea that it's aspirational. For instance, healthy food access and making, healthy food and striving to, as opposed making every effort to. If we said striving to, then I think we've put it as aspirational. Then I think what Mr. Kelly said, other boards and commissions could look at this and say, this is sort of one of those things that we've looked at doing, that we think is aspirational, that we'd like to move in that direction, as opposed to being very directive and saying, we're going to do that. And we're going to spend whatever it takes, we're going to do whatever it takes. That's really what making every effort means. And then I think we just need to go through and soften some of this. For instance, I, I'll just use one example. If we say, set nutrition standards for vending machines located in city-owned or leased locations and for food offer-
Councilmember, Councilwoman Schaff, could I ask like when you're, I think it'll help all of us to track-
Oh, sorry.
If you could say what section and what number as you make comments?
So the- So, the first part, when I was talking about in my comments, when we talked about, I said striving to, that's under every section where it says, you know, Section 3, or Section 4, or Section 1, or Section 2, in the first paragraph. So, now I was just looking at, as an example, at Section 4, Item Number 4. When you say, "Set nutritional standards for vending machines located in city-owned or leased locations, and for food offered at city events, city-sponsored meetings, served at city facilities, and city concessions." The way I would read that is you probably wouldn't be able to serve soda, you might not be able to serve chocolate, you might not be able to serve cookies. I think that's very, what's the word, directive. And if I looked at, and I actually printed out for everyone, other cities' responses to this, and if you look at Mountain Views, for instance, I actually thought Mountain Views was better, I thought it said, "Make available healthy food service and vending choices." You know, it's less directional, I think we'd all like to have healthy choices, but I don't want to tell people, for instance, you can't have a city function and serve soda. And maybe we'd get there, but that would be a Policy and Services discussion with some, you know, input from employees, input from other people. And so, what I'd like to see us do is either refer this to Policy and Services, or pass this tonight, but then just soften the language, which isn't that hard. Rather than say, for instance, in Item Number 6, under 4, Healthy Workplace, "Adopt ethic standards and adopt policies that support diversity," that implies that we don't have those policies. I am assuming we do have those policies. And any, if we think that we need to adopt more policies, again, I would view that as going to Policy and Services, or possibly be within the city manager's purview, where, you know, you bring that. So, I think we should say things like, "Support ethic standards, and support policies that support diversity." You know, I think there's a couple of those things. So, if we want to refer to Policy and Services, you know, I think we could do that. I think the negative to doing that is that there are so many items on here, frankly, that Policy and Services could spend an entire year going through all of these. So, I actually think the better practice would be to soften this, make it more aspirational, take out the directive words, you know, where it says, "Adopt," put in things like "support." And then I think we could adopt that tonight, they could come back to us on consent, having rewritten in a less directional, more aspirational way, and then we wouldn't have to go through the whole Policy and Services thing. That's what I would personally suggest to my colleagues, that we do that. You know, for instance, I probably wouldn't say prioritize, and that would be in Healthy Environment, Section 2, prioritize capital improvement projects that increase opportunities for health and well-being. Well, I personally think we need to prioritize the public safety building. And I, you know, you might be able to argue that that promotes, you know, well-being and all that, but then again, what doesn't? So, I think you might want to say, "Support capital improvements that support capital improvement projects that increase opportunities." So, I just wanted to throw that out to everyone, I think those are the two ways we could go on it, and I would like to see us, you know, make that decision and move forward.
Madam Mayor, may I just interject? Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. I would just offer that if the desire would be to try to get some council input tonight, I would think you probably wouldn't be in a position really to act on it as much as, let us mine it and quickly take it and just come back and bring it back to you, reworked, you know, with those changes, rather, I mean, we'd certainly catch the drift of already these comments, depends upon what the rest of you want to say. But if you want to do that, rather than referring to Policy and Services, I think, you don't want to wordsmith this to the detail you do on other motions tonight, but you might want to do what Councilmember Scharf did, is identify some key places and words, and then when we look at all of those, we know how to kind of rework this, and we could bring it back very quickly. I mean, within the next two agenda, I mean, week after this agenda, I think we could very quickly turn this around for you.
So, that's what I would support doing, and I guess the question is, I'd like to make a motion that we do that, then.
Do you want to hear from other colleagues?
Sure, I don't mind.
First, let's just do a quick round here, just a couple of minutes apiece, if we could, and see what the thoughts are of other councilmembers, and if we need to go back more, then we can do that. Councilmember Phil.
Well, I don't need to talk much, because I think, between Councilmember Scharf and the city manager, I said it sort of pretty much exactly sounds right. I think, you know, a lot of good work here, I think what it needs is an edit, right? And Policy and Services is probably the wrong place, staff is the right place, if that makes sense. I mean, Councilmember Scharf got sort of all the ones that I had, except the part about mandating grocery stores, I think that we would be careful with that one, too.
Councilmember Niss, you've already spoken, so, did you have something you wanted to throw in here?
I do, actually, I'm not as, I won't vote against the motion, but I think there's some real merit, if Policy and Services has time this year, to actually refer it. Tom and I have had a bit of a side conversation, and he said he had no idea that we were actually doing this. And so, I'm not sure that the rest of the council has known how often we've met, or how intense the discussions have been. So, it may be that going to Policy and Services may add some more to this without having to either wordsmith it tonight, or comment on it tonight, and, but again, it depends. It would be nice to get it done by the end of the year, I don't know how Policy and Services looks for their agenda, but let's hear what others have to say, but I wouldn't have any hesitancy to refer it.
Just an interjection from what the conversation was this morning at pre-councils, the Policy and Services agendas are quite full, but that's just a point of information, it's not to try to influence.
No, but I think that's important. If it's jammed till the end of the year, I think it's important that we also pay attention to the workload, because that's one more workload for the staff. And if that's the case, then I would support making the comments we're going to make tonight, and then sending it back to Jim and Councilmember Scharf, did you offer to work on this?
Councilmember, Councilmember DeBois.
So, again, thank you for the work and the presentation, I agree with the content and the purposes, there's a ton of good stuff in there, seems to build on a lot of things we're already doing, which makes a lot of sense. I agree with Councilmember Scharf's ideas to soften it legally. I do have concerns around process, like Councilmember Niss said, I had no idea this was happening. I'd like to have been aware, I don't think it was in any status report, the city manager's monthly report. Mayor Holman mentioned the Parks Master Plan, but that seemed to be a very different process to me. I mean, I just went on the website and searched for meetings for the Healthy City Committee, there's nothing. You search for Parks Master Plan, you get a ton of hits. So, I'm concerned about the process. Also, we just got the report, and I think staff's been really good about getting us reports 10 days ahead of time. I'd like to see us continue to do that, and again, so, no criticism of the actual report, I just think if we don't get it in time, we should move it to a different meeting. So, but again, reading the ordinance itself with the softening, I would support it, I don't think it needs to go to Policy and Services. I also don't think it needs a lot of additional funding, it seems almost like sustainability, and that it's built into our budget in a lot of places. We heard about the bike plan earlier today, you know, there's a lot of money there that applies to the Healthy Cities. So, I just want to say, I do object to the process, though, and I'd like it to be more transparent, and just have things be up on the city website.
And you did hear my comments that end earlier, was this not on the, I guess maybe it's more the city clerk, maybe, I thought this was on the council's calendar, these meetings I thought were on the council's calendar and on the city website, I thought?
I don't think they were, but they certainly weren't on the public events calendar or anything. And it's not clear how you pick the members for this committee, you know.
Staff would have to answer that one. Councilmember Burt.
Well, I do share Councilmember DeBois's comments that, one, I think that the product appears to be good and constructive and valuable. I also share concerns about the process by which we got here. I'm glad to hear that there was a broad consensus within this ad hoc committee. We appear to have had an ad hoc committee of the council and a community committee that the council really didn't know diddly about, and that's really not how we normally would do things. It doesn't mean that the product was bad as a result of that, but it's, it does create questions. Whether we go to Policy and Services or not, I do disagree that we could do this on the fly tonight in some meaningful way, but it would somehow take the Policy and Services Committee a year or so to do their normal review of this. I don't think that's the case. We've gone through things in pretty rapid order this year, that had a lot of depth to them at Policy and Services. That would be our normal function as a council, to review this, if it doesn't need a lot of work, it'll go faster at Policy and Services. I'd also like to say that, as I was thinking about this in the context of, how does it fit in what we have as our priorities? When we adopted it as a council priority, I struggled with calling it a priority, because it seems like something that will ultimately be one of our core values, which we're going to be taking up as under Policy and Services shortly. And I ended up coming around to treating it under our definition of a priority, of a, something that would be an extra focus over a three-year period, because that's what it really takes to get this kicked off and integrated, and then it becomes a core value, once we've lifted it off the ground. So, I'm fine with treating it that way, but I'm struck that it's also, has some similarity to, say, sustainability, which I think will be another one of our core values. And like sustainability, it's essentially something that's essentially an overlay to a lot of things that we do, including our Comprehensive Plan. So, I think that's also one of the ways in which Policy and Services may give some recommended guidance to how this would be then integrated with the Comp Plan discussions, which I think it belongs in that vein, and we're still, because it's new, we're trying to sort that And if there are fiscal impacts, then we should flag those, and if they're significant, we'd refer them to the Finance Committee. If they don't appear to be significant, kind of standalone or identifiable impacts, then we wouldn't need to. I'd also, there was a memo, or a letter at Places from Art Lieberman that raised an issue, and I don't agree with kind of all the implications of what he had to say, but I do think that this is a concept that should be integrated with land use and zoning, and how do we help assure that we've done those with an adequate consideration of the health of the community. We're already taking certain measures to address some of his concerns, but this is at a conceptual level, and I think that it's as a value that then informs creations of policies. I think it belongs there, within our land use and zoning considerations as well. So, those would be, those are my thoughts. I think as a result, I would favor that it go to Policy and Services. As I said, I don't see that as a protracted measure, I see it as one discussion item, and then it would come back to the council in the way that we normally do it. We hear council input, giving us guidance, and then we flush it out in a deeper discussion under, at Policy and Services, and returns to council, reflecting those, both the guidance and trying to flush that out.
I think the city clerk had looked up something.
Yeah, we had put several of the meetings on the council events calendar for the Healthy Cities meetings.
And again, acknowledging that, you know, we do acknowledge, staff did too, that this didn't follow the normal course, and tried to explain why, so I understand Councilmember's comments. Councilmember Welbach.
I'll just essentially second the comments by Councilmembers DeBois and Burt, although, you know, I could flip a coin about whether it goes to Policy and Services, or just goes back to staff to come back to council. I think Councilmember Burt's made a good case for going to Policy and Services, and on the other hand, the extra staff time required descended of Policy and Services. I guess that's the, probably the strongest case against it. You know, we're talking about a long-range priority here for the city, I don't see an absolute need for it to get done this calendar year, I understand the desire to do so, I certainly from, I respect all of the work that people have put in, it would be a nice cap on the year's worth of work to have it done before the end of the calendar year, I fully appreciate that. As far as Policy and Services's schedule goes, we do have a lot on our agenda, but I think we could probably squeeze this in sometime in the next few months, probably early in the next year, if not this year. But like I said, I could flip a coin.
Councilmember Berman.
So, I agree with a lot of the comments that my colleagues have made. First off, thank you to the community group, I don't know who else here was on that, but when I looked down the list of folks, and groups, and organizations that were represented, it was no surprise to me, the high quality of the work, and it's not a surprise that there was, you know, pretty much unanimous, you know, agreement in the direction. It was such a great group, and I was surprised to see some of the names on there, because I know they're so involved in so many other initiatives in town. So, you know, just another example of our residents stepping up. Because of that, though, it is so substantive and meaty, that it's kind of hard for us to digest without any context, and, you know, it's great that some meetings were on the calendar, but without really knowing what those meetings, without knowing what the group is, it's hard to figure out what events to go to, and what meetings not to go to. I would be okay with, and this is an unorthodox process, but I would be okay with passing it tonight, you know, similar to what Councilmember Scharf said about softening it, but then essentially referring it to Policy and Services after it's passed for implementation. Because if it is softened, it makes it more vague, and, you know, makes it more aspirational, and leaves a lot of the meat to still be put on the bones of how we'd implement it, and that conversation could happen at Policy and Services. So, I don't know if that's a, I don't know if I'm trying to have my cake and eat it too, but that could be a way to kind of achieve both goals. But, you know, on the whole, I think it's a great idea, I was happy to support the goal. My first year on council, when it didn't succeed, I was happy to support it this year, when it did succeed, and I think it's great work, it's just that we have to make sure that we do our due diligence also, as we go around adopting things.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Yeah, I want to second the notion that it's a very impressive stakeholder group you put together to help with this, and I think what you've come out with is reflective of the wide diversity of perspectives that you got from them. I guess it leads to a fundamental issue of, you know, is this aspirational, where we're trying to say, here's a whole range of things that we want to be involved in and take into account, or at the end, do we start setting priorities of, gee, these are the two, three, four things that we ought to really put our resources into, and either improve, or continue to move forward on. I guess that leads me to say, maybe it does make sense for the staff to hear from the council tonight, to do a redraft and come back, and then have the council act on referring it, if they feel comfortable with it. Just a couple points going through, I was very impressed with the Health Fair, reaching out to the community, offering some very valuable information, resources, ideas, and getting a nice response from the community. I can see this as an annual event of embedding itself in the community. I can see this as an annual event of embedding itself in the community. Of gee, my concerns this year are different than they were two or three years ago, but in the fair, there's a, a source of information, of references, of referrals that I can use, I can catch up with. So I think that the Health Fair, if I had a set of priority, is certainly one that jumps out. The other base notion that comes across is information. The Health Fair is one source of information, but I think you talked of other ways, websites and, and other ways of doing trials with employees, with businesses, but using that as an information base that can be distributed through the community in a variety of formats. So I think using information is, is a good underlying goal to have. I like the comments that were made about design of it could have a big impact as we think through zoning, building, how we think about a healthy community, where, you know, not just walking and biking, but actually living and gathering places, meeting places, and things like that are a part of the design of our community. One element that seemed to be underemphasized when you think about a healthy city of, you know, most people in the community can take care of themselves with good information, but the most vulnerable are, you know, are with us. Housing, mental health, abuse, issues like that. And it seems as a healthy community, that certainly should be one of our priorities, whether it be a budget priority or to just make sure on the, on the calendar in our comp plan is referral to those who are most vulnerable in our community. But look forward to continuing the good work in next year's Health Fair.
So thank you, colleagues, for your comments and to Vice Mayor's last comments. Under Healthy Culture, number five says, "Improve access," and these are striving to. I appreciate councilmember Scharf's comments in that regard. "Improve access and awareness to mental health support and education." And number six says, "Seek solutions, promote awareness and compassion for the unhoused." So one thing that has sort of been alluded to in a number of comments by colleagues this evening is under Healthy Environment, number seven. "Incorporate people-friendly design into buildings and spaces such as human-scale, tree-shaded pedestrian passageways, gathering places that demonstrate favorable impacts on resident and employee health and quality of life." And I think that one is, it is a bold statement. It is something that we strive for in a comprehensive plan in our zoning code. And I think having the guidance of that one here would be really integral. So the resolution doesn't try to accomplish everything, but it does try to fill some gaps in what we currently do. And I think councilmember Scharf, to reference you again, by making it aspirational, I think, is really important. And remember too, that, what I mentioned earlier, is that the League of Cities is actually looking to Palo Alto to set a new model and an enhanced model in this regard. So councilmember Wobak. And should I give it back to you, Rob? Do you have any other comments, having heard councilmember comments?
No, just to appreciate the comments. You know, sort of learning, learning lesson here, I think. Needed to check back into, with council a little earlier along the way. I think that's, that's really good feedback. It's sometimes hard to find the right balance of trying to move, move things along and do work with the staff and the community in balance with checking in with council and committees. Sometimes don't always get that exactly right, so, but so learned a lot from it.
I have a comment, Madam Mayor. So there are a couple of next steps that were talked about. I, I would think it would be, I think it would be a little bit awkward to actually move it tonight with the idea that it would be then subsequently modified, just because, you know, that, I mean, I do think it would be easier if you want to go on that track to just ask us to come back very quickly with an edited version. And I think we can get, you know, certainly 90% of the way there with where the drift is. And a lot of it just has to do with the nature of the kind of active verbs that are used in front of these things that just make it subject to what it means. And so I still think you can keep almost everything that is there in the aspirational piece, if you just, if you just leave more room for the implementation discussion that would, would follow. So I would just make that suggestion if you want to go down that route rather than referring it to the committee. I think once you did adopt it even tonight, then going back to change it would, could be misconstrued by folks and stuff, so that's my own thinking.
Thank you. Have lights by councilmember Wobak and councilmember Scharf.
Yeah, actually, I just, something else stood out to me as I was reviewing this. So, you know, one thing that was discussed at our, before our retreat and at our retreat was the idea of highlighting social services, particularly for four of the most, you know, at-risk groups. And kind of riffing off of what Vice Mayor Schmidt was referring to. And four groups that we identified at that point were the unhoused, seniors, youth, and the disabled. And there are references, you know, to aging in place and education, but the only one of those four groups that is explicitly called out in this right now is the unhoused. So, you know, at this point, I think I'd like to move actually that we, that we do refer this to Policy and Services. I would like to, to give it a run through PNS, just to do that touch-up work. I think it shouldn't take a terribly long time to do. And also, I just want to say, I didn't, wasn't sure if I was very clear earlier. Really great work, again. And the, although, you know, a few of us, I think, have expressed concerns about the, how the process went, I want to make sure that this doesn't come across as an attack or criticism of the staff. This also has to do with, you know, how we're communicating among the council, you know, the idea of, you know, essentially setting up an ad hoc committee. You know, it's, you know, it's, it's just an opportunity for us all to learn lessons. So at least for myself, I'm not trying to place any blame, just saying, okay, where do we learn lessons from this going forward? But yeah, I'll move that we refer this to PNS.
I'll second it.
Okay. Do you need to speak any further to your motion?
I do not.
Councilmember Burt.
Yeah, I'd just say, one, we, if we attempted to go through the wordsmithing tonight, we'd spend considerably more time on it, because I don't think we, we would have that sort of agreement yet. We could direct it to staff to have them do the wordsmithing for us, but I, I think this is actually, it's not just wordsmithing. There are certain policy-related refinements that would come about, and that that's the normal role that we use Policy and Services for, and I think it'll add value and, and return to us pretty promptly. So those are the reasons that I, primary reasons that I support it. And I, and I also think that it will be important for us to give guidance and, and recommendations to the council on how this gets integrated, in particular within the comp plan discussions. And that's something we haven't had a chance to really vet yet, and I think that'll be important. And it will be a way that this begins to have even deeper enduring impact on our, not only community values, but the policies and programs that we have.
Councilmember Scharf.
So I'd like to make a substitute motion that staff edits this, taking into account council feedback, making it more aspirational and less directive, and comes back to council with it, at which point we can make the decision about whether or not it should go to Policy and Services.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Schmidt. Councilmember Scharf, do you care to speak to your substitute?
Yes. I mean, I noticed that every week we send to be, we're sending something to Policy and Services. And I think that, I think it'd be good to come back with this, make it aspirational, look at it. I don't think it'd be a lot of work for staff to do that. I think it's a lot more work to send it to Policy and Services. I think it would be a lot easier to do that, to have council then look at it, take the broad outlines of it, pass it, and then we can send it to Policy and Services for implementation or for how we integrate this, those kinds of things. I think that's a much better approach.
Vice Mayor Schmidt, speak to your second.
Oh, just to support the comments of the city manager who said that, one, for staff efficiency, and two, for ability to come back to the full council quickly. Makes sense with this.
Councilmember Niss.
I, I think I played my hand out before. I do want it to go to, I prefer it going to policy. And I think there's another reason. I'd like some more buy-in from those of you who weren't involved in it. And I think that, that would make a difference. Also, it gives the public another chance to come and talk about it. We've kind of shortened up the process tonight, and we're not used to shortening our process, believe me. So I, I think overall, this is actually a better idea. I know that Mark had suggested we pass it and then send it to policy. I think that gets muddled. And so I just assume at this point that we, we do what we would normally do, send it to Policy and Services, have that group become...
What you said.
You don't know what I said? It's all on record. So I, I think this will make more sense to the public. They'll have a chance to come and talk about it some more. And I also think that this is such an important aspect of what we do, this healthy cities, this healthy communities, that it's really important that we, that we vet it as much as possible. So I am supporting the motion.
Councilmember DeBois, are you coming up with some pocket legislation over there? Councilmember Phil Sith.
Well, I agree with councilmember Niss that I think in its current format, we can't pass it tonight. It's, it's too prescriptive in its current format. And I think if Policy and Services wants it, then they should, they should get a shot at it. And then the question is, should we have the staff bake it a little bit before it goes, a little bit more before it goes to Policy and Services? And that's an interesting question, and I'm still thinking about it.
City manager.
I already told Rob, if it goes to Policy and Services, we're going to still give you a red-line version that you have to get 50% of the way there.
So I don't have any other lights, but I have a question. So given that Policy and Services' agendas are full, as was discussed this morning, and this is maybe a question for city manager or city clerk, both, is, I'll get right to you, Pat.
Policy and Services chair, I think we should address that.
Well, so, so my question, and you can pile in on this too, but I just wanted to, I think it'd be really great if we could get it to Policy and Services and back to council to approve before the end of the year. So, councilmember Burt.
Yeah. So as we have discussed our recent agendas, we actually, tomorrow night's is a light one. But we've been willing to have extra meetings if needed, and up until now, they weren't needed. And so the committee's been open to that. If, if that's what would be required to get it back, I, I think that's a good objective, and, and I think we'd like to, to see it returned to council this year as well. And be willing to, to do what it takes to do that.
So my question then, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the motion by councilmember Scharf and Vice Mayor Schmidt, because I'm so enthused by this. At the same time, as I mentioned earlier, I've been a little uncomfortable, and staff knows this, with the process that we, for good reason, chose to, chose to pursue, to try to get more information to, whether it's Policy and Services or the council, to make some decisions. That said, I think councilmember Niss made some very good points about why this might go to Policy and Services. And we certainly don't want to disenfranchise any council members or have any council members feeling like they weren't engaged and, and employed in this process. So a couple of questions for staff, I guess, and maybe comments for Policy and Services is, you know, understanding this is aspirational. I just, my concern about it going without more clarity from, from council members is, you know, if it's going to be more general and more aspirational, I just, I would hate to see like, the words like support, promote, you know, prioritize, I would hate to see that, or address. I'd hate to see that all those just become, you know, limp noodles. So, you know, I just, I have a little concern about that. You know, this is aspirational, not, it's not like, you know, throwing chewing gum on a wall. This is, you know, has purpose to it, has meat to it. So I guess that's, that's my concern. So I don't, city manager, did you have a comment?
I think there's, I, I do actually think that it's easy to strike the right balance in the language. That is separate from whether or not all of the, the policy framework is, is, it goes too far or is incomplete. That's a different issue that we can work on the language.
So I guess my final comment to Policy and Services Committee is, while this may seem to be kind of a, a long resolution, it is trying to, like, cover the gaps and fill the gaps, or maybe we don't do as good a job as, as maybe we could. So with that, the motion, I'm sorry, the amendment that's on the floor.
Substitute.
Substitute, the substitute motion is seconded by councilmember Scharf and made by councilmember, excuse me, made by councilmember Scharf and seconded by councilmember Schmidt, is to direct staff to return with a revised resolution incorporating revisions from council to soften the language to be more aspirational. So vote on the board on the substitute, please. And that fails on a 7-2 vote. Councilmembers, yes, councilmember Scharf and Phil Sith voting yes. So we return now to the original motion, which is a motion by councilmember Wobak, seconded by councilmember Burt, to refer the resolution supporting healthy cities and healthy communities to Policy and Services Committee. And that passes unanimously. And based on the council, comments by councilmember Burt as chair of Policy and Services and staff, it sounds like this can return to the council before the end of the year for adoption. Is that correct, city manager?
Pardon me?
That, based on the comments by councilmember Burt and staff, it sounds like this can make it to Policy and Services and back to council for approval yet this year.
All right, we'll do our part on the staff.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, and thank you to the members of the public who came, who were members of the stakeholder group especially. So with that, we move to item number 12. I should share this. Councilmember Wobak's comment about getting this back before the end of the year was, councilmember Wobak said that's aspirational. So item number 12, then we move to council direction on selection of voting delegate for the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting on Saturday, November 7, 2015.
I would move approving Karen Holman as our mayor, voting Saturday afternoon in Nashville with her two votes.
Motion by councilmember Niss, seconded by councilmember Scharf, I think was first to designate the mayors the voting delegates for the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting. Typically, we have alternates as well.
Second, Dan.
So amendment offered to make councilmember Niss the alternate and, is the, councilmember Niss, do you accept that amendment?
I accept.
Okay. And councilmember Scharf as seconder of the motion? Okay, all right. So I don't see any lights, so what we have on, in front of us is that councilmember Niss moved by, moved by Niss and seconded by councilmember Scharf to designate the mayor and councilmember Niss as voting, wait a minute, as mayor as voting delegate and councilmember Niss as alternate voting delegate, if the city clerk can correct that, for the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting. Okay, now it's good. Okay, vote on the board, please. And that passes unanimously. With that, then, we, do we have any councilmember comments, questions, announcements? Councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, and make a difference today, I worked on the duck pond, some really great kids and some adults, and I think the Kiwanis Club has been doing this for 10 years or more. A lot of great work. And I just wanted to say to councilmembers, if you, if you want to clean up some crap in Palo Alto, the duck pond, it's a great place to do it.
And I really appreciate... And I really appreciate councilmember DeBois spending the day out there, just really, I really do appreciate it, and it meant a lot to a lot of people. Councilmember Niss?
And if no one has noticed, Tom has a big Band-Aid on his thumb because he said he's not used to manual labor. Beyond that, though, if anybody knows who won the float contest at Paly, I'd love to know that. We never heard the end of it, and the floats were absolutely terrific.
Councilmember Philseth.
On Saturday, I attended the No-Fly Day event at San Francisco Airport, which is a rally, and by people in the Bay Area around airplane noise, coordinated with similar events at several other cities around the United States. And I would estimate there were between 100 and 200 people there from all over the South Bay, with elected officials from Portola Valley and, I believe, Santa Cruz.
Councilmember Wobak.
I just wanted to say, this past weekend in my neighborhood, on Saturday, there was a boy, I think about, probably about six years old or so, who was lost and wasn't able to find his way home, couldn't, you know, say where he lived, and a few neighbors came together, hung out with him, called the Palo Alto Police Department. A couple of officers came out, and shortly thereafter, his dad found him, his dad was out on his bike and found him. But I just wanted to, you know, mention that the way the neighbors, some children and some adults, helped out was great. Also, I wanted to give a shout-out to officers Marcus Barber and also Officer Eric Figueroa, who both, I think, did a great job responding to what could have been a tough situation. They helped, you know, make sure everybody was calm and comfortable, and I think they handled the situation very well.
Thank you for that. And I'm sure city manager Keen will relay those comments. So with that, we have an item 13, which is conference with city attorney, anticipated litigation authority, government code section 54956.9D, two subject charges for Stanford Fire Protection Services. And I need a motion from councilmembers to go into closed session or not.
Second.
Councilmember Scharf moved, seconded by Vice Mayor Schmidt, to go into closed session. I see no lights. Vote on the board, please. Councilmember Niss, would you care to vote on that one? Any moment now, that will pass unanimously, so we will be going into closed session. Thank you.
You know, we're not running on ice like in...